All right. Good evening, Holliston, and welcome to the May 1st, 2025 meeting of the Holliston School Committee. Hard to believe it's already May. Apologies for the late start, but we'll get right into it. I'd first like to request a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to add executive session minutes for approval but not release from October 10th, 2024, November 14th, 2024, November 26th, 2024, December 12th, 2024, December 19th, 2024, January 9th, 2025, and February 27th, 2025.
Move by Don?
Second.
As amended?
As amended.
All in favor? Hi. Here's six to nothing. Lisa, just as you're doing this, 10:10, 24, 11:14, 24, 11:26, 24, 12:12, 24, 12:19, 24, 1:09, 25, and 2:27, 25, approval but not released. And as part of that, we also accepted a lovely amount of grants from the HMAPA, and we'll get to a statement from them in a minute under public comment. But first, if we get to a report from our student representatives.
AP exams start next Monday. NHS induction is May 13th. Prom is May 16th. Theater 370 opening night of their play Clue is tonight, and there are also shows tomorrow and Saturday, and then Decision Day for seniors was today.
Class of 2025 graduation night cruise tickets are on sale. HHS class of 2026 scavenger hunt for the food pantry is on Sunday, June 1st. Seniors' last day of classes are on May 23rd, and the kids from the DECA ICDC trip came back yesterday.
Thank you. Individual school committee coming.
Wanted to thank all the students that ran the car shows last Saturday. I know the weather was not the best. Was able to stop by. My son loved it. Got some cookies from the bake sales. So really good senior project. If only the weather was a little better, but they made it work. That's all for me.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
I just wanted to say again, congratulations to all the seniors. I know that today was Decision Day, so I've got lots of kids in pictures. The great schools everyone's going to, so it's very exciting, and I wish you luck. And then also Teacher Appreciation Week is next week, so humongous thank you to all of our amazing educators. Just you guys, everyone does such a fantastic job here at Holliston, so thank you for all of your efforts.
Very briefly, just echoing that gratitude and appreciation for all of our educators, and also thank you to the PTO for what they're running next week for educators. I think there's a taco lunch and a breakfast on.
Yeah, coffee on Wednesday, I believe.
Yes.
Barbara's here, so she'll probably update us as well. Yeah, some treats and everything. So the PTO always does a great job with that, so thank you.
Yeah, so I will echo that. Thank you to all of our educators. We have a brief email I think we're going to approve later for that, but it's always nice to be able to acknowledge those that work so hard for all of our kids, so really appreciate that. Moving on just briefly, I wanted to remind the community that on May 7th is town meeting. And just to be clear, this is a Wednesday. Town meeting always starts on Monday, except this year when it starts on Wednesday. So it's Wednesday, May 7th. Please.
That's a good mile.
Sure. Please show up. The schools have a significant number of items on the warrant. There's a significant amount of other items on the warrant that might be of interest to people, but please show up, support the schools, support our budget, support our capital requests. It's obviously critical to our continued success in operations. All right, and at this point, we have a public comment from the community. We have two people signed up, and Barbara, if you'd like to go first.
Hi, Barbara Ryan, Fortune Irving Place. Good evening. Thank you for acknowledging the PTO. We do have the teacher and staff appreciation. Like back in the day, we wrapped our arms around everyone, but there's taco, coffee, snack bags that are going to be distributed all next week. You can visit PTO website. There's volunteer slots always open if you're feeling like you want to contribute that way. But we appreciate the generosity again of our community for giving donations. And I will sit Carla Alfred and Katie Errett are hospitality chairs, and so once again, they have organized an amazing week, so I want to give a shout out to them. Second is, May 7th is also Bike, Walk, and Roll to School, starting at 7:05. There's three start times. It's been advertised, and thank you to our principals and to our PTO website. But we're excited. This year, Shenade Ohad and her mom, Dr. Michelle Potter, really took this on. Shenade is a sophomore and a Leo, and she's really done the major coordination and just had her have that opportunity to grow and learn in a leadership position. So very proud of her, and a bunch of Leos will also be helping that morning. May, this Saturday, another PTO, just a shout out, is a Dig Fest in front of Miller. We're on our fourth school, and the Outdoor Learning Alliance, which is a subcommittee, is actually going to help beautify the outside. And all of these projects have been done in concert with the administration, the principals of the buildings, as well as really enthusiastic teachers who have said, we want to make these spaces more beautiful and part of learning. So thank you for that. My last two comments are, I'm really excited to see a call for a math subcommittee. I know this has been a couple of years in the process led by Dr. Cusack and Dr. Menard, but there's been so much passion around that, and I really appreciated that. There's a little bit of slowing the roll and really hearing our math community and our community in general to see what is the best moving forward. And maybe leveling, de-leveling aren't the best words, but there's something to meet everyone where they are, and particularly with math, so I'm excited about that as a parent. And my last comment is, I've been doing a lot of reading about AI, and I know Bill Gates yesterday said AI and robots will be taking over in about 10 years. And somebody said, well, what about haircuts? I don't ever want my hair cut by a robot. But anyway, I know this is on your minds, and hopefully, as we look to the future, AI, ethical AI, innovation, respecting privacy, how do we interpret? We've done, I think Holliston has always been a leader in technology in the classroom. What's next with AI? I think it's something that has to be paid attention, and I know you are, and I thank you, and that's it. Thank you very much.
And finally, since I don't get my hair cut, I won't have to worry about that.
And we don't want any robot teachers either, so.
Sorry.
All right, Ingrid. She's our HMAPA rep. The list of gifts is quite impressive, so I'm glad you're able to make it to demonstrate another great arm of our, you know, volunteer parents.
My name is Ingrid Dalland-Ortay. I'm at 15 Andrew Lane. I have two children at the high school, and they're both in band, in jazz band. I'm also apparently is on for band for the HMAPA and on the Grants Committee and Scholarship Committee. So thank you for granting the HMAPA a spot on tonight's agenda. We are pleased to announce that we are giving $7,466 back to our teachers and grants this coming season. Grant requests are submitted and then reviewed by our Grants Committee. All three strands of the arts are represented and include requests for a portable PA system for elementary music, iPads for the Art Department, tools and storage for theater, stage crew, an electric piano for the Music Department, and guitars for the middle school and for Ramsdale, Miller. All donations go towards grants and scholarships which are underway. I would also like to note that we omitted the requirement to pay to be a member this past fall, which was previously required for all four years to apply for scholarships out of equity concerns. All of our supporters are members, and we have still been receiving many generous donations throughout the year to support our teachers and students. We encourage the community to still donate this year if they have not already. And finally, as an email to you earlier this week stated, we thank you for your support for the performing, of the performing arts ensembles as you've created the new upcoming high school schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all that. I'm sure they will all be put to good use. All right. Okay, so you would like to do the teaching and learning update first?
Yes, we can do that one.
Okay. Thank you, guys. All right, so we have a number of people here, and so while Ms. Beatty's presentations were listed first, we will let this group go first and get home well before us. So if whoever is going to be doing the presentation with Dr. Menard, can you come up?
Teaching learning.
Jenny, keep forgetting you're part of many crews.
Yeah.
And I will note that while we started late, we are 12 minutes ahead of schedule, right?
Just keeping.
Quickly check.
We take the positive when we get it.
My technical advisor.
I'm very excited tonight to have the district curriculum team. They've done an amazing job this year on what they've accomplished, and please remember that they are all on the teacher's contract, but they've done an incredible job, and we just wanted to share with you a little bit about the work that has been completed this year.
Should we start with the introduction?
Yes. As you remember, you're going to, I'm sorry, you're going to introduce yourselves as you talk, right?
Okay.
So yes.
I'm Krista Marino. I'm the STEM Curriculum Specialist at Placentino.
I'm Jenny Mann. I'm the Humanities Curriculum Specialist and Interventionist at Placentino. So we are going to, we get to kick things off. We are going to speak a little bit about what our intervention has looked like this year, some of the data that we've gathered from that intervention, students we've supported, and some of this will sound familiar from our conversation with you at the start of the school year, but just to sort of give you an update on where things stand. So for both literacy and math, we have a variety of assessments that we use. Some of these are benchmark assessments, some of them are screening tools, and all give us really valuable information, thinking about where students have made growth, where they have continued areas of need. We also take teacher input very seriously. Of course, the teachers spend all day with their students, so they know them best. And so in thinking about which students enter and exit intervention, that teacher input is, you know, a significant piece of that. Next slide, please. So we run small groups from about 9:15 to about 12:25 daily. Both Kristin and myself have direct service with students. We also have a number of tutors, both literacy and math, that we work with that support students. We have what we call a win block, standing for what I need, and so that's a defined time for every classroom schedule where there's no new instruction happening in the classroom. So, for example, if a student were coming to math support, that would be during their win block, which would mean they're not missing, you know, a phonics lesson or recess or lecture, anything like that. You know, we felt that it was really important that that was a protected time that, you know, really was differentiated for students, that they could get what they need, whether that was, you know, out of the classroom support, like going to math support or literacy support, or perhaps working on something independently in the classroom or with a teacher in the classroom. We, you know, have become scheduling wizards sometimes in terms of thinking about students who are MLLs, who might be getting their MLL services during that win time, or students on IEPs. For example, perhaps a student who might only have speech goals but might also need some reading support, you know, just really getting, I think we pride ourselves on being really flexible and creative and just finding ways to fit kiddos in, because that's our job, to meet kiddos where they are and support, support them with what they need. And then we do progress monitoring either weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly, depending on the student level of need, and you'll hear more about that in our dyslexia presentation, so I won't bore you with that right now, but that's something we've done a lot of this year. Thinking about, you know, students that we've reached, it fluctuates the number of students at any given time because we're constantly, you know, flexing students into different groups. And so to give you a range of, you know, the number of students throughout the school year that we've serviced for both literacy and for math, so between 68 to 75 and, you know, just, oh, that's okay, you know, around 80 for math, so pretty, pretty amazing. The next few slides will show you kind of an overview of some of our data from this year. So for literacy, I'm going to speak about some of our DIBELS data. So DIBELS is a benchmark assessment that we use three times a year. Every student in the building is tested beginning, middle, and end of the year. For students in reading intervention, as well as several other subgroups, we also progress monitor them every other week. DIBELS defines predominant measures, depending on the grade and the time of year, and so that's what I've chosen to show you for each grade level here. So phoneme segmentation fluency is just a fancy way to say, like, a student's ability to break apart sounds, and it's all oral. So if I say to them, okay, the word is cat, I want you to tell me the sounds. I want, what we want them to be able to do is say, cat. And so what you'll, just to sort of orient you here, the blue dot at the bottom is the beginning of year data point, and then the pinkish, purplish square is the middle of year. So I like this visual because I think it shows the growth really nicely, and then that thick gray bar is the end-of-year benchmark. So you can see, you know, obviously, all students are different. Some students have really significant growth from beginning to middle. Some are already meeting that end-of-year benchmark by the middle of the year. You know, many students still have a little bit of growth to, you know, make there, but, you know, this is an exciting and really informative graph to look at. Next slide, please. For grade one, we're looking at nonsense word fluency, so this is really looking at a student's alphabetic knowledge. So if they're looking at two- and three-letter nonsense words, like the word bim, B-I-M, right, we want to see if they can say the sounds and read the word. Some of them can just read the word, bim. Some of them need to say, bim, and then read it, right? So looking at sort of where they are in that developmental trajectory of blending sounds. And a similar piece here showing the beginning-of-year data point growth to the middle of year. And this is a.
X-axis?
Sorry?
What is the x-axis for?
It's student names.
Oh.
Yes. So I should, good question. Not trying to be sneaky, just trying to protect student privacy. So I should mention as well that the graphs that you're seeing are representing students in intervention. So we have this data point for every student in the building, but just to give you a snapshot of students receiving intervention. Yes, it's just cut off names. And this, we've also tried to really look at how each of these subtests should match our intervention focus, right? So for first graders, that phonics focus is so huge, right? Are they able to apply their, you know, phonics knowledge and start decoding words? That's, you know, so this, this is a subtest that really tells us information about that. Next slide, please. For grade two, we're looking primarily at oral reading fluency. And so this is, you know, one of the most complex subtests within DIBELS. Students are reading a passage, a grade-level passage, and they can be very challenging. As a second-grade teacher, Kristin.
As a former second-grade teacher.
A former second-grade teacher, Kristin knows they're very challenging. And so, you know, these are our students in intervention who, you know, many of them started the year with. So we're looking at, when it says words correct, that's how many words they have correct in a minute. So, you know, many of these students starting the year with, you know, around between 20 and 30 words correct per minute and making some nice growth. This is, you know, asking them, this subtest is asking them to bring all of those skills together. And so looking at this data mid-year, you know, obviously, many of these students were not yet at that benchmark, and so we did some sort of reflection, reflecting and had conversations with the staff about how to support that both word level and sentence level fluency, and like really focusing on fluency as a target area. And so that's been a large focus for us this spring and late winter.
And this slide is our number sense data based on the I-Reddy assessment that all the kids at Placentino take. At Placentino this year, as I mentioned, in the fall, that we have really been focusing on building that really solid, basic number sense skills and a kid's ability to quickly recognize quantities, because that has been research shown to really affect their math for the rest of their life. So this is from I-Reddy. So it's separated by grades. We have K1 and 2, but then if you notice the top, it says most recent. That's our January data point, just so you know. And then BOY stands for beginning of the year, which most kids took at end of September, beginning of October. But as you can see, we made a lot of growth. So greens are obviously, we like, we want all the kids in the green. But if you look at the yellow particularly, those are the kids who were below grade level. So at the beginning of the year in kindergarten, we had 78% of kids below grade level in their number sense skills. And in January, we are down to only 45% below grade level. In the first graders, we started the year with 66%, one grade level below expectations, and now we are only at 48% below grade level. And again, this was January, so I expect it to go much higher when we take the end of the year, so I'm very excited to see it. And then in grade two, we had 59% one grade level below, and now we are only at 43% grade level below. So not only is the yellow moving, but you can also see the red, all those grades went down. In kindergarten, they don't have a red score, two grade levels below, that would be three years old. So that's why, not them discounting it. I just wanted to explain that. And then, as you can see, the darker green means that they're above grade level, and the lighter green means that they're on grade level. So everything is making positive change, which is awesome to see.
Just had one question on that one.
Yeah.
Grade level is based on end of the year, right? So we would expect most to be below grade level, and then obviously January.
So the light green one, it actually changes. I-Reddy has, it's split up. They have a score for beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. It's a wide range, and then that light green is the one that changes as the year goes on.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Like the benchmark keeps.
Yeah. It's kind of like DIBELS, the benchmark gets higher and higher.
Throughout the year, it's not like we expect them to be at the end of the year.
The colors just don't change for the teacher's side of things.
So we'll move on to Miller. I'm Elsa O'Brien, the Humanities Curriculum Specialist.
And I'm Ashley Bouchard, the STEM Specialist at Miller.
And we'll go pretty quickly through these first couple of slides because you saw these earlier this year, and they're very similar to what Placentino shared just a few minutes ago in terms of what we're using to identify students that need to be, need to have some extra support and get some intervention. Next slide, just kind of highlights in a similar fashion how we're structuring our interventions at Miller. And similarly, you know, we have a win block. Most of our kids are in, who are in intervention are getting them two to three times a week for 30 minutes, and we're progress monitoring monthly. With some of our, and we'll get to this in a minute, but with some of our, most at-risk kids or kids who have the most need, we're increasing our progress monitoring, which we'll talk about shortly. So we have about 90 students that we've been servicing this year, and like Jenny mentioned, that fluctuates. We are continually looking at our data to decide if students can exit or their program needs to be adjusted, and similarly for math.
And there's about 100 students for math, so that's from the beginning of the year, students who've exited, who have entered, we're pushing into classrooms, so we're able to help a lot more students get them where they need to be.
So, oh, go ahead.
And here as well?
This is for the entire year. So.
Do kids, do they possibly start mid-year?
Yes, yep. So for math, it's constant fluidity, right? So if they're meeting where they need to be, I want them to fly. So go back into the classroom, and then we monitor them, and if they're struggling, we'll pick them back up and give them support that they need. So the goal is to be in the classroom and be successful and feel good about math.
And same with literacy. We are looking at data, not just for kids who are in intervention, but other kids too, to see if we need to add them to our program.
When you talk about kids that weren't struggling at the beginning, and then they start to decrease, you pick them up as well?
Yes, exactly. Yeah. So I also brought a snapshot of some data for you to take a look at. This is the DIBELS oral reading fluency, and like Jenny mentioned before, the gray bar is the end-of-year benchmark, the bottom points are the beginning of the year, and the upper points are the middle of the year. These are just the benchmarks. It doesn't show you our progress monitoring. We are also taking a close look at the progress monitoring scores, which I'll show you an example of in a moment. And this is just one measure. We have actually five subtests in, for example, grade three that we use to assess students for the benchmark, but the oral reading fluency benchmark is actually a metric that's sensitive enough to show growth that's meaningful and reliable over short periods of time. And so researchers have actually studied this and the ORF, studied the ORF data and know what a valid rate of improvement is. So there's a chart that you can look at to decide, like, how many words per week or how many words per month should a student be adding and increasing to show growth. So next slide. Oh, this is a continuation of grade three. So again, this is just our reading intervention students to give you a snapshot. And then the following slide is grade four.
Is this a data dashboard or is this?
This is DIBELS Amplify, but this information is also on the data.
Followed through?
Yes. So when students aren't making expected progress, or when we look at a student who we see is not making as much progress as we would like, we're looking more closely at other data points too. So this is just a snapshot, but for example, if I see that a student isn't making the same progress that we'd expect, we would want to look at adjusting something. So we might want to look at adjusting the frequency that we're meeting with the students, or we might decide that we're going to change the size of the group that they're in, because they might need a smaller group, or maybe changing the instructional program. So if we're doing a fluency focus and we see a child is really struggling, we might take a look at some other data and decide, okay, maybe there is a phonics piece that they really need some additional support in. Let's use that to try and target that phonics piece and see if that supports them. So if you go, one more slide is grade five as an example, and then the slide after that, these are just, this is one student, and it gives you an example of their phonics subtest, the nonsense word fluency, and you can see our progress monitoring each month throughout the entire year. And that big target at the end on the right-hand side that looks like, you know, the Target logo, that is where we expect them to be at the end of the year. And the aim line is the dotted line that connects where they were at the beginning of the year and where we expect them to be at the end of the year. So we're looking to see, are they, you know, sort of like the height and weight chart that you get at the pediatrician's, like, are they on target for their trajectory? That's really what we want to be able to see. And if they're not, and this is something we also learned at the Dyslexia Institute, if we take a look at the last three or four data points, and many of them are below that aim line, we want to adjust our programming or our grouping or our focus. But if they're above and below, if they're on that, that target, like this student is, then we would want to continue with that programming.
Benchmark goal, is it per all of the students, or is it per student, based on where you think the student's going to, like, a realistic goal for that specific?
Yeah, so the goal is for everybody to reach grade level by the end of the year, but we do have students that we know won't reach that point because of, you know, maybe it's an MLL student who's just learning English for the first time, or a student who has multiple needs. So, and we'll talk a little bit more about this later, but we can set growth for them that is, you know, ambitious growth versus less ambitious growth, depending on their grade level, their needs.
Tailored to that student.
Exactly.
A reasonable expectation of what you think.
Yes.
All right, on to math. So I'm really excited to share this with you. So this is from I-Reddy. It's the cohort of students that are in intervention, only looking at them. So the first graph at the top, where it says 70%, so annual typical growth, so by, this was benchmark two, so by the middle of the year, you would expect students on grade level to get 50% growth. That's what you shoot for. So this is saying that the median percentage is 70%. So half of our intervention kids scored below 70% and half scored above 70% of their annual typical growth. So what's awesome to. So what's awesome to look at is the graph below. I wanted to break it down to show you the actual numbers of where students fell. Again, that 50% is where you want to see a typical student make that growth and progress throughout the year. So if you notice, we have from 0 to 49%, 25 of our students scored within there. And then from 50 to 99% annual typical growth, we had 20 students of our intervention students make that growth. So 100% growth is where you want to see them at the end of the year. So we had 20 get between 50 and 100. And then if you look at 100 to 199% growth, 17 of our intervention students achieved that much growth, which is over a year's worth of growth in a half a year's worth of time. So kudos to my interventionist, who I've been working really closely with. Her and I collaborate really well, and she's fabulous. She pushes into the classroom as well, I'm pushing into the classroom. She has small groups, I have small groups, the whole kit and caboodle, and we're rocking it. And then one student scored 200% growth, which is over two years' worth of growth from where they started at the beginning of the year. So leaps and bounds. Not only are they growing, but they're also coming out confident, and they don't want to leave intervention. We have to kick them out, shut the doors, and say, no, you could come show us your test grades, that's fine, but this is, our interventionist has to work with other students. So if you go to the next slide, the top distribution shows that first cohort of students. And on the bottom, where it says 2%, 6%, 71%, 13%, 6%, 2%. So those are the shifts of where it went. So the red with the slash marks, we were at, 8% of our students started there, and now 6% are there. So some shifted to the next lane. And then if you look at two grade levels or below, from the beginning of the year, 38% of our students started there, and now there's only 13% there because they shifted to the next lane. And if you look at one grade level below, we started at 52%, which has now increased to 71% because those students who are two or more grade levels below have caught up. And then we had none on grade level. It bumped up to 6%, so four of our students. And then mid or above grade level, we went from 0% to one student. And that's probably that 200% or could be. So that was our first batch of data from iReady from the beginning of the year to January. And I just wanted to show in that second graph what our starting stats are for our second round. So coming in, you could tell the percentages are getting better, but we picked up some more reds in students who may be struggling, who are cusp-y, and pushed those who are able to be pushed and be successful and still on watch list. But we're hoping that some of those yellows and reds do that same shift, and we'll see that in the next round. So, very proud.
So I'm Casey Conahan, and I'm the Humanities Coordinator and Interventionist at Rams.
And I'm Carla Kraus. I am the STEM Curriculum Coordinator and Interventionist at Rams.
And so we are just using the following to gather information about students to qualify for intervention. We look at their IXL scores. And IXL, we do benchmarks at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. And we can go in and see student progress. It's especially accurate if students are consistently stepping into the arena and using IXL in their classroom to update their plans. But we have also looked at MCAS data, but we, as the year goes on, we look more into term grades, and what's in power school, as well as teacher input about how students are performing.
So, as you know, at Briems, we are putting this into place, this literacy and math model, for the first time. So we have made some adjustments from the beginning of the year. For Tier One, we've moved into more of a team consultation model. So for Tier One students, those are students who aren't performing well academically, but their testing doesn't identify that there's specifically a literacy or math reason behind that. Maybe it's executive functioning, maybe we're not sure. What we're doing is moving to a team consultation model with, so Casey and I, along with appropriate specialists for the situation, so it might be the OT, it might be the school psychologist, it might be the guidance counselor. We're coming together as a team, looking at team input, what the, what their teachers are saying. We're looking at observations, so going in and observing in the classroom and taking notes on what we're seeing. Then coming together as a group to work with the appropriate, the appropriate experts to come up with trial steps for the team to try, and then checking back in with the team after three weeks, figuring out what worked, what didn't, and then modifying as needed. So that's been a little bit of a change. Before, we had just been relying on, on kind of pushing in and taking a look, but we really felt like we needed all of the stakeholders around the table to make the best recommendations possible. Tier Two is continuing to be Rams block. We have small groups with Humanities or STEM. Casey does the Humanities, I do the STEM. Humanities continues to be 30-minute Ram block, Rams block once a week. Math, I changed to 30 minutes twice a week because it really felt like we needed a little bit more continuity with that 25-minute period, having one day to talk about a topic and then another day to practice, without a whole week's time in between. So it means that fewer students are getting that intervention at a time, but they're getting a higher quality and more consistent intervention. The other thing that we added was the executive functioning, which isn't up there. We have a 30-minute slot at Rams block on Friday to work with a group of kids, a group of students who've been identified by their teams, whose grades are consistently low, and it appears to be more of an executive function issue. So we work on organization, we work on prioritizing, we work on having those conversations with kids and being their check-in point every Friday to see how the week went. We make, we make deals, you know, what are we going to work on for makeup over the weekend? And then we follow back up with them the following week. So it kind of gives them that, that consistent adult to check in with on a personal level. And then, oops, Tier Three, I don't need, I can speak on this. Tier Three is where we have students who are three grades or more below grade level, and we work on that, we work with them one-to-one during an arts period to work on either literacy or math, depending on which need is identified to be the priority at the time.
So our numbers are a lot different, given the schedule at Rams, and so we are...
I also want to point out, you have no tutors, you have no tutors right now.
We have no tutors, that's correct.
Right, I just wanted to point that out.
Younger grades, we had built in tutors over the years, and we're trying to build some more at the middle school.
Yes. So it's just Carla and I.
Right.
So these are the numbers of the students we've been able to support so far this year. That's not necessarily all at one given time, similar to Placentino and Miller. We've had some students come in later in the year, other students meet grade level benchmark on their IXL, or grades have improved, and conversations with teachers and parents have felt that they're ready to try it on their own. And then we'll move into that consultation mode and check in with teachers about how they're continuing to progress. And that EF stands for executive functioning, that's that Friday group that Carla just mentioned. So we use IXL to give us our data points, and this is really the, the way we're able to look at it. So the x-axis would be the students, each student receiving a blue and red line. And so the blue is their beginning of the year score, the red is the middle of the year. And so we're using this information to give us a sense of, if students are progressing, you'll see some students are making great progress, hitting benchmark. And granted, that's not organized by grade, but as you'll see, some students are above that sixth and reaching that eighth grade level, which means they're hitting those grade level benchmarks with those red lines. The individualized reports that we get, which then share a breakdown of those scores, and so, say, in literacy, we get an overall score for overall English, we get a total reading score. And then that's broken down into reading strategies, vocabulary, language, and then there's a writing section. And so that gives us information of different areas to target, which we're use, which I use to help me kind of decide groupings of students, as well as what skills to work on. Sometimes I feel like that's not enough. So I've been researching different middle school-level types of inventories to use, and one of them that I've been enjoying, liking is the QRI-7, which allows me to sit with students one-on-one, determine a grade level passage for them to read out loud, where I can check their fluency. I can then listen to their kind of recall, and they'll tell back the story, and then we will work on, they'll answer questions, and the questions are coded by both literal and inferential, to kind of tease out more of where some of that breakdown is for their comprehension, since that's such a huge part of what we do at the middle school. I find that a lot of our students, if they're still really working on the decoding piece that Elsa and Jenny talked about, those are usually students who are in programs by the middle, by middle school, and so we're focusing on that comprehension level. So this just kind of gives you a sense of our overall growth, with the total students we've had, that we've had a few students not show any increase. That might be because they came in, they might be some of my students that I got later in the year, and so I only have that one benchmark for them. But 12 students have made at least one grade level of growth, two up to two grade levels, two students up to three grade levels. And so we're averaging about a 77% grade level growth at the mid-year, and 84% of students are showing improvement. So we're really excited that even in a small dosage, we're still making some gains, and we're just hoping to continue to problem-solve the scheduling conundrum that just exists around intervention at Rams.
So math is very similar to what Casey said. I am using, you can see, we've, the blue line is beginning of the year, the x-axis, again, is names for privacy. And so you can see the growth from beginning of the year to present. Again, some of our students aren't showing a lot, but I've also cycled in and out several students, so some of those students are just taking a spot in intervention. In math, I'm focusing on a couple of things. Fluency has been a big issue for our kids. It's not often that they don't know the steps or know what to do, but their lack of fluency gets in the way of being able to, in their working memory, hold everything, be counting on fingers, not having that fluency to be able to smoothly move, work through what they know how to do. So I've brought Math Fact Lab in, which is research-based, and it also gives benchmarks on where they are at in fluency. For addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, students can see their growth, they can see which facts they're fluent in already, which need work, and it adjusts as the kids practice. So that's been a big help. And it also has the concrete representational and abstract built in. So it's got concrete examples, it's got number lines, it's got dice, it's got all sorts of other things that help students build their number sense. So it's not just about fluency, it's also just about, it's also about building that number sense. And along with it, I've been using IXL similarly to Casey, which is, it really helps us identify where gaps are, what don't they know. But we're not just relying on IXL, so the IXL will be telling me what don't they know, but I'm working with kids in small groups so that I can see why don't they know it. And then we can tackle those for different kids, it's different reasons, and sort of carry those threads through. If it's, if it's how they're organizing their work, if it's an executive functioning issue in math, I can focus on that with those kids. If it's fluency, I can focus on that. If it's just gaps because of absenteeism or something else, yeah, we can, we can fill those gaps. And I'm also doing some research on some other intervention programs. There's Meadows Center Intervention, which is highly regarded and research-based, and looping some of that in because we are still in the experimental phase of what's going to work best with our middle schoolers. Math Lab next year should allow us to take many more kids into math intervention, as right now it's just myself.
I just need to check, and that's why Karen and you and some teachers that put together, asking for the one math tutor right now.
Yes.
We can see the model works, having our interventionists oversee and helping them using the data. And you've been able to get tremendous growth, even though it's not all teachers doing the interventions, you're overseeing the interventions with that model in place. It's working really effectively.
Follow-up to that, like, the numbers are very different. Placentino, about 70 kids for literacy, and about 80 for math, and Miller, about 90 for literacy and 100. And those are kids moving in and out, right? Are you seeing kids moving in and out?
Yes, so they, they are moving in and out, which is why my number's a little higher in math for kids that I've seen, because, because I had some that I was able to release really quickly. They just needed a little refresher, and they were able to head on out. And what I'm doing is, it's middle school, so it's more of a communication between myself and the student. If they're like, no, I really feel like I'm at the right place, I'll put aside time at one intervention, where they can do their, their step into the arena benchmark. And I'm like, that's fine, let's like, let's give it a go, let's see if you are, because if you are, and then I give them a little graduation party and see them off, and someone else can step into that open spot.
But in terms of what we're doing at Placentino and Miller, we have the, we have tutors that are supporting that work, but no, and no math tutors right now, okay? And again, we've advocated for that with this year's budget, but what do we have for math tutors in terms of Miller and Placentino? Just to understand how it got us to those much higher numbers.
So I have one math tutor, so it's myself and one math tutor, but our schedule lends itself to a 30-minute wind block that alternates. So there's a group of teachers assigned to that 30 minutes.
Okay.
So whereas they have everybody.
We, everyone has Rams block in the entire building.
So we're able to meet the needs of more students because they all are dispersed based on where their block is.
And what's at Placentino, what's it like?
And it's the same model at Placentino. So we have a wind block that's, that's scheduled to have only like maybe three or four classrooms in that chunk of time. And me and Jenny pair up and kind of see if, oh, if they need both, we kind of flip-flop so that they can get both during that time. And I have three paraprofessionals that work under for the math, and they're all fantastic this year.
Thank you, that really helps. And again, we're advocating for that math tutor in this year's budget.
So your capacity is limited, I guess, more so than that the...
Yes.
So are there kids in there who are not meeting their needs?
I believe so, which is why we advocated for a math tutor, so that we can reach more students.
Is it just on the math side that year?
It's on both sides.
No.
So we absolutely, you know...
I think we're more ready to target the math. Carla and I have had a lot of conversations about the similarities and differences of what we're experiencing in our subject areas. And, you know, with math, she's able to really target specific content and either fill that gap or practice a continued skill with repetition there, whereas comprehension is a lot more broad, and there's a lot of pieces to it, and they all come, work together, you know? So in a single, not a single session, I mean, for a lesson, I'll pull a passage, and in that, I might be working on syllabication. We might be working on vocabulary and tying in morphology that has a lot of benefits for building comprehension and recognizing additional words. Then we'll work on reading and identifying supporting details, all to understand, like, this, this one text, right? I find a lot of kids struggle with text structure, so along with reading and comprehending the text, we'll do often like card sorts, where we play around with the organization of what, how, what are the subcategories of this text? How might we label paragraphs with a main idea? How might we reorganize... How might we reorganize details to see that they can be grouped in other ways? Why is the author organizing it the way that they did? All to build comprehension around what does this text focus on? How is it organized in presenting ideas? And then students will take a little comprehension check-in at the end to do that. And I'm not even getting into writing that could really be tied to. Right, so there's just so much. And so, where I'm kind of having to take multiple weeks, because I see kids once a week, to get through and see what's working, what's not, it's just been a longer, slower process. And I've met with folks on a job alike where I meet with other interventionists throughout the state. And in talking, it's a similar experience across the board that it's just different beasts that we deal with. So, I think math right now is at a place where they see how they can facilitate that. I'm still working it out.
And so, similar to Casey's slide, this is our math intervention iXL student growth. So, we had three kids with no increase. Nine students up to one grade level, seven students up to two grade levels, four students up to three grade levels, and four students move up more of in three grade levels. The average growth has been 1.68 grade levels, and 88% of the students have made growth. And again, some of these students represented, just to get the whole numbers, are kids that have recently been picked up in February.
So, I'm not going to ask about an X-axis. If I look at 1.68, that's amazing. Is that like DIBELS where it's following along? So, like the way to think about it.
Yes.
You know, we're mid-year, they grew 1.68.
Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
That's awesome.
I know, right? They're all doing an amazing job.
Do you need math tutors? I mean, you're doing great.
For 26 kids.
What we're seeing over time, like we had this model more in place at the younger levels, but we actually tried to really make it consistent, K to 12. We still have work to do in the 9 to 12 range because the model, we have challenges with the schedule. We know that. But we're seeing that the trend is really working. And I think we've got the right model in place. And now, we need to add the additional supports over time, such as tutors to help support the work that they're doing.
And does this work move, or what you're learning about the kids that have been in the program, is this moving from building to building?
Yes, absolutely.
We're sharing data. We talk nonstop.
They're doing an amazing job of talking to each other all the time and being on the same page.
I think that's been one of the most exciting things about this team this year is that those, all the conversation, opportunities for vertical conversations, both as a large group and then by subject area as well. So, yes, it's a very different feeling, like sending a kid over to Miller knowing that, you know, Ilsa and I will talk constantly about them. And I think that's echoed across all the transitions.
And I think we've done a really great job over the past few years of passing the data from Miller on to the middle school so that it's following them. And as soon as they step in in sixth grade, we know what they got.
So, nobody slips through the cracks.
I just want to say one other benefit to this new model. And I, well, in intervention, in our previous model, still followed kids that struggled, but this is content-specific. But we're not, you know, we're able to see those kids again next year if we need to. And there's just that person that's kind of staying with certain kids potentially through their three years if they need it. But also being that voice to kind of represent them as they move to the next grade level in seventh and eighth grade. You know, teachers, they're getting their new batch of anywhere from 50 to 95 kids. And we have such a smaller group that we're working with. So, we can be those voices for this small group of kids that are not quite at benchmark but need that extra attention. And so, I think that's a nice model and part of the intervention program.
Okay, unfortunately, Joel and Leah cannot be with us tonight. Joel has a medical emergency, and Leah was not able to join us. But they have made a videotape. So, let's see if we can get this to work. And I need to go here, and let's see.
Intervention at the high school level looks to have been the other two schools because of two main reasons. First, the current schedule does not provide adequate time for outside of class interventions. And second, at the high school level, intervention is best placed with a teacher who is also delivering the content. This year, Leah and I have focused on work in the following areas. One, creating a multi-tiered system of support featuring robust tier-one instructional practices. Two, designing and delivering professional development in the areas of disciplinary literacy and formative assessment. Three, creating an executive functioning support for students during DSB. And finally, providing in-class supports for teachers, including coaching cycles with teachers, differentiated small group instruction, and lesson support. So, all teachers constantly strive to help their students achieve their full potential. Student engagement in lessons plays a large impact on the likelihood of student success. Coaching is having a thought partner on how to reach engagement within a lesson. During conversations, we work with teachers to create goals that are powerful, emotionally compelling for teachers, measurable, and student-focused, which is why when we work with one teacher on a coaching cycle, we impact all of their students. This is why our numbers look very different than the other schools. The next few slides focus and illustrate on what teachers say about their perspective of the coaching experience. It impacts, shows the impact of their practice and their student experience. Please take a minute to read their perspective.
So, these are the quotes that they're referencing. Okay, so you can see that there are common themes from all the schools in what data we use to determine who receives interventions. So, every single school, it's based on multiple data points. At the elementary, we're using iReady. At the secondary schools, we're using iXL. We're using MCAS at all levels where appropriate, obviously. Teacher input from all schools. DIBELS at Placentino and Miller, and math recovery at Placentino and Miller. Going to totally switch gears now from intervention. And we'll have Ilsa and Jenny tell us about what's been going on in the ELA curriculum review for the elementary schools.
So, I can get us started. So, we began this curriculum review middle of last year. And so, our team includes representation from every grade level and across programs. So, traditional French Montessori. We have admin on the team. It's a really nice group of a lot of diverse perspectives and voices and experiences. So, we began our process, you know, really thinking about where we are currently, what we have in place, what we're using, sort of challenging our beliefs about literacy.
Developing vision.
Yep, doing some visioning work. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to do this thoughtfully and carefully because we care so deeply about this work. And we know that to do it well, we need to be very thoughtful and strategic about it. So, this school year, we've really dived into, you know, doing a gap analysis, so thinking about everything from, you know, scheduling, materials, you know, among many other things. Doing some group learning. As I'm sure all of you know, there's been, you know, huge shift in thoughts about literacy instruction. The research isn't new. There's just a little bit of new focus on it. And so, doing some group learning about that, using things like the curate reports, or curate and ed reports, excuse me, as evaluation tools when looking at different curricular materials and sort of training our team on how to use those evaluation tools. We also put out a teacher survey because, you know, of course, our teachers have, are the ones who are teaching this content and with these strategies and these materials. And we wanted to hear from them, what their thoughts were, what they identified as areas of need. And then Elsa and I had several conversations with surrounding districts that have recently, either also in this process like we are or have recently completed a curriculum review. And some chose to adopt new materials, some didn't. But those conversations were hugely helpful in understanding their process, understanding the decisions that they made and why, and sort of just getting, you know, some feedback and some advice. And so, we're continuing those conversations.
And we've been participating in the Implement Network with DESI to help us, to guide us through this process. And they have many resources. So, we've been attending quarterly, not quite monthly, kind of between monthly and quarterly Zoom sessions with DESI and other surrounding districts, collaborating with them to talk about what roadblocks or challenges or successes they've had, and to provide resources for each step of this process. And that's been enormously helpful.
One of our next action steps next week, actually, we will be applying for a DESI grant. No matter what direction we go in, it can help support our next steps in terms of new materials, professional development, just, you know, an opportunity that we really can't pass up. So, that's something coming soon. And then, looking into, you know, summer and fall, continuing to meet as a group, reviewing some sample materials, thinking about what further steps beyond that will be in terms of a potential pilot or sort of like a cross-sampling of different materials. And again, I just want to echo that, you know, the opportunity to do this in a thoughtful, methodical way is, has felt really important to us. And so, we're very grateful for that.
So, besides this, we've been doing some other incredible work. And Jenny's going to speak to our standards-based report card committee, which we just came from earlier tonight.
I'm sorry you have to hear me talk so much. So, this graphic at the top shows a timeline for this committee. And so, we, at least at the elementary level, we call the report card the RASP Report on Suite Progress. And this is my fifth year in the district. And as long as I've been here, there's been a real want and need to sort of revamp and, you know, overhaul many, if not all, parts of this report. So, we're really excited to be doing this work. Task members include, so we have Erin Snyder, French immersion teacher, Natasha Martin, who's a grade-two teacher, Placentino, and myself, Dr. Slaney, Placentino principal, Carrie Perpaul, fifth-grade teacher at Miller, Michael Glenn, Spanish teacher at Miller, Dave Keim, Miller principal, Dr. Minard, and Bren DeMauro, assistant principal at Miller. So, a nice sort of wide range of different perspectives and voices as well. Our fall process was really interesting. We looked at almost 20 different districts' sample report cards. And we looked at them through, using a rubric, through all different lenses. So, thinking about, you know, visual design and language for performance indicators, standards, right? So, the real like overarching goal of all this is to truly have a standards-based report card. And so, after, you know, sort of picking apart all of these different exemplar report cards, we identified pieces that we liked of each of those different samples that we looked at. And then, the phase that we're at right now, so this, many members of this curriculum team have drafted, you know, by grade level sort of standards for each subject area as well as SEL standards. That was one of the areas that teachers expressed the greatest struggle with in terms of a lot of redundancy in language, a huge, huge number of strands within that area. And feeling like, you know, if we had, if we wanted, this is obviously such a crucial area to report on for, you know, in this report card, especially at the elementary level. And so, we want to make sure that we're doing that accurately. So, we use the CASL competencies to come up with our draft of proposed standards. So, in the past few weeks, Kristen and myself and Elsa and Ashley have met with grade-level teams to get feedback on the standards language that we're proposing, again, for each subject and also for SEL. We're also getting feedback on the performance indicators. So, currently, we're using terms that, you know, teachers have a really hard time with, like developing understanding, limited understanding, just problematic for many reasons. And so, most of our meeting today was spent, you know, really like wordsmithing, you know, well, what's the difference between usually and sometimes or progressing and partially meeting? And like really having very thorough conversations about that. So, the last thing I'll say is that we have already met with Dan MacLeod and some other tech staff to get some input about, you know, feasibly from their end, what's possible in terms of design, you know, what this would look like on the teacher end inputting-wise. Because we want to think about all the stakeholders involved in this, right? The teachers who are completing it, the families who are reading it. And so, they will be heavily involved in our next step once we have sort of final drafts of all of our standards and what the actual content will be. They'll be creating, you know, mock-up for us. And then, leading into the late summer and fall, we'll be, you know, our hope is to have a full implementation of this for next school year. So, some, you know, training and implementation to be delivered in the early fall.
And we're looking to have parent forums to give us. The parents' information about the changes. And then also, other school districts, I won't mention who, but had an incredible landing page on the website, which we plan on doing, having videos describing everything and just kind of really laying it out for parents. So, it's a huge job, but something really important, which goes right into our next slide because this is directly impacting curriculum maps. Because by doing the standards-based report cards, the teachers are using transfer tasks to determine how they're going to fill out the standards-based report cards. So, we just met, was it this week or last week? I'm sorry, with the district team about PD?
Last week.
Was it last week? I'm sorry, I started running together. And.
Last week was vacation, so.
It was Monday.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, it was Monday. And we all decided that next year, in the fall, we are going to have additional training for all staff on UBD. So, you can see our timeline for the finished curriculum, stage-two docs. Elementary math, we'll have it done by 2025 and '26. And all of elementary math, stage-one, is completed and posted. Really exciting. Rams, you can see the rest of the deadlines. Please remember that these are not published to the website. These are for teacher use only. And what they have in there is the transfer task, the formative assessments, and summative assessments. So, a lot of restructuring based on elementary school reports, standards-based report cards. And then also, with the changes that are happening within math at the middle school and also at the high school, there's going to be a lot of changes going on. Dr. Papas.
Hi, I'm Ida Papas. I'm the curriculum coordinator for Unified Arts, which is World Language, Wellness, Visual Arts, Performing Arts, and Library. I'm not going to be able to give you lots of data, but maybe you're done, maybe you had enough. But this is sort of a summary of what we've been working on in Unified Arts this year. Last year in World Language, we finished our curriculum review. And we published that. And we received some new resources in August. So.
Thanks to the capital expenses.
A capital expense, yes, thank you too.
Yeah.
But imagine walking in in August and seeing a new curriculum on your desk that you haven't really had a chance to look at and need to start teaching it. So, we've had some, you know, a lot of shifting in the curriculum since the beginning of this school year. And we've been creating new maps across the board for all World Language. In Wellness, they received new standards last year. So, all the maps that we did create needed to be adjusted to reflect our new standards. And this year, I'm going to go into a little more detail about the PD. But they received PD into this new approach and these new standards in order to address the new way of teaching basically skills-based approach. The teachers identified the new units that needed to be added and had some great conversations across schools, which rarely happens, where you have like the middle school, health teachers will be talking to the Rams health teachers have like the middle school health teachers will be talking to the RAMS health teachers in order to identify what is redundant and what new units needed to be added. And so, again, they're adjusting their maps also. In Visual and Performing Arts, and again, I'll go into the PD that they were given, it was basically on assessment. But they've been working on stage two, which is creating rubrics and assessing in the arts. So this is our Professional Development Day, which was the first time we had done it. And it was, it was an eye-opener for me. I reached out to every possible professional organization I could, and all the local schools around us, and then people that I just knew, to see who was interested and teaming up with us for PD in order to save some money. All of these schools have sort of small departments in each of these disciplines, and none of them can really provide a discipline-specific PD that's high quality because it's just so expensive. So I spent the summer and in the fall, just trying to garner a lot of support for different people who would, who would agree to send their teachers to us on the day that we had PD, which we're discovering that that's a real sweet spot is Election Day. Because a lot of schools have that off because they're, schools are being used for, for voting. So we've been trying to sort of push our way into making that a standard choice. And so this is what we were able to provide in November. Leslie Grand, who is pretty well-known across the country as a presenter at state conferences, and she's a coordinator in Maryland for a huge district. Anyway, she came in and she offered two workshops. As soon as I said it was Leslie Grand, all kinds of people were interested. They were like, oh, you got her, right? Which was a little nerve-wracking because she was very expensive. And I was like hoping that we'd get enough people to make it really pay off for us. And it did. Workshop one was addressing the needs of our diverse World Language learners, which, you know, hearing about intervention, I'm cognizant of what we need to do in these other areas of the curriculum. And the workshop two was implementing these, the tasks, basically trying to get that transfer task just right. And that was my request of her to come in with that workshop. 16 different districts wanted to participate. 125 teachers took us up on it. So when, when I'm able to sort of get that together, I think it came down to like, like $7 a person, you know? So we took her, her fee and we divided it by the teachers, which was a little crazy because they would say, well, how much do we owe? And I'm like, we'll just wait until we find out how many people. And they were like, no, we can't work like that, right? We can't work with like, I don't know how much it will cost. But it paid off for everyone to be patient. And so it was like $7 a person. So it worked out great. In Wellness, we knew, so last summer, I went to several DESI presentations around the new standards. And I saw some fantastic presenters there. And I immediately tapped them to see if they would be available on Election Day and, and do a couple things. One, the new standards are a little different. They have sort of shifted everything from a checklist of skills that students needed to do, like standing on one fluid and being able to throw with the left hand or whatever. They started shifting it to sort of more mental processes, like able to advocate, you know, able to process and collaborate. So it's moved to a standards-based sort of format, which was a huge change for our teachers. But it also has different strands for puberty and, and our sexual health units. So there were some changes in there. And I could see concern in their eyes, like, I hope I hit this just right. So what we did was we brought in the two presenters, Magar Bao, who is a leader of partners in sexual education, and Dr. Susan Milstein, who's a professor of wellness education. And they came in and did six hours. And their presentation was focused on changes in the new standards and skills-based approach. And they had a ton of hands-on application, which is one of the things that Wellness usually complains, is that they never get anything they can use tomorrow. So they were able to get that. Eight school districts participated with 39 participants. And if you think of how small Wellness departments are, that's actually a pretty nice size group. So Visual and Performing Arts, so this was my, my dream since coming here. Dr. Scott Scholler, I saw a presentation of him years ago on assessment in the arts, and I knew he needed to come and talk to us. Very approachable, great examples, did a huge research project in Connecticut, and had tons of visuals and made it really engaging for everybody. His presentation was just how to assess in the arts and manage all the data, and, you know, how do we use that to improve student learning when we have sometimes 600 students a week? And three different school districts came, which were 32 participants. And I don't want to forget our library PD. We were able to go right to our National Library Association and pick just the right PD for our librarian, Linda Canal, which was basically analyzing her collection for DEI titles, et cetera, that are appropriate for her school. So we always have World Language visits, always. And this year, it was no different. Westwood was in contact with us, probably in November, about coming. They're doing a deep dive on Spanish Fles, which if you've never heard of it, it's basically foreign language in the elementary school. And they are looking into how that looks going forward from elementary school into middle school and high school. So they came and they observed and talked to teachers. They were interested in our pedagogy, but also what resources that we use. And I was thrilled to say that the district gave us these fabulous resources. So they were very impressed. Then we got a phone call. I was kind of surprised. I won't, I won't kid you. The Denver Language School called us, well, called me, and was like, hey, we'd like to come and do a site visit from Denver. I was like, really? You're a language school? We're not a language school. And they were like, no, we, you're where we need to come. They are a, an immersion school, like the whole school is immersion, but in two languages. They have a Mandarin program and a Spanish program, and they want to add a French immersion program. And they're like, we get immersion, like, we're good at that, but we're really interested in seeing the sort of connective strands between elementary and middle school, because they were a K-8 school. So anyway, they came, they were absolutely blown away by our French immersion program and our teachers just knocking it out of the park that day. I was just like blown away. Anyway, so they, they sent us lots of kudos on LinkedIn, too, by the way. The SEAL by Literacy, so out of our curriculum review, lots of things became apparent to us. And one of them was the SEAL by Literacy, which is sort of a push from DESI towards awarding students who have proficiency in two languages, two or more languages. And their real interest in us offering these tasks to, to students who don't, who aren't just studying the language in school, but have a language from their home community. So that was really our push this year, was to improve the number of students who are not just taking the SEAL by Literacy exam in French and Spanish, but in their home language. So I wanted to tell you, we had 83 test takers. That is like more than double than what we usually have this year. 30 juniors and seniors earned the SEAL by Literacy. But I just found out that students who were on the French Exchange hadn't had a chance to take maybe one section that they wanted to redo to see if they could make it. So it may actually get higher. There are 20 French and Spanish students, but there were 10 other languages that students got proficiency, and that was Mandarin, Portuguese, Arabic, and Russian. And those tests were long, very long tests. So. Oh, and part of the curriculum review, the community was surveyed. They gave us such insightful information about our program. But one of the things that we came away with is that we needed a landing page for World Language. And actually, we need a landing page for just about all of our academic disciplines, because when you try to find something, you have to go to the school, and you have to know the teacher, and you have, and it's just like a needle in a haystack. And so I did some research into other schools, oops.
Sorry.
That's all right. I think it's the box, the square, square on the top.
There's a link here. Yeah, maybe escape it. Okay, yeah.
Sorry. I thought it would be easy, but clearly not. It's not linked.
Is it linked to it?
It's a link in the box.
Try the big box. I think it was the little one, but. We looked at it together just a couple hours ago, so it should be there.
You know where?
Okay. So this is under construction, but we wanted to give you a sense. So before we go clicking into it, I just wanted to sort of describe what we were seeing in other, other districts, was that they would often have a place where all of the academic information would land, and then you could look for things that way. Or you could go through school, or you could go through teacher. But there was one landing page that everything sort of sent you back to. And it was just so eye-opening because it makes things much easier for a parent who has kids in multiple grades to see some continuity. So if you click on academic departments, this is how we were imagining it. So we have all of our disciplines right here. And if you go to World Language, that's the only one that we have developed to show you right now. So if they have any questions they can't get an answer to, I'm the first contact, so they don't go bothering teachers who are too busy to respond to their emails. So, and then we, we, we thought about this through curriculum review, what do people need to know? And so, yes, the, all the instructors are there with their contacts. Yes, the DESI frameworks are there, if you want to look at them in detail. Yes, our vision statement. But we also, if you could click Teaching Philosophies, in Curriculum Review, we described in detail the teaching philosophy of French immersion as opposed to our traditional French and Spanish. And we wanted to make sure we put that out there for everyone's, because it is unique. And I'm learning that even in immersion schools, our philosophy, philosophy is not exactly the same as other immersion schools, which sometimes is more like a dual language school, but they call themselves immersion. So we wanted to be very upfront about who we are, because people come here specifically for French immersion. And then if you could click, there's tons of things about proficiency levels, what does that even mean? But this was the other one that I wanted, because this is the thing I think parents mostly are looking for, and they haven't been able to find, is how do I progress in each of these language strands from kindergarten all the way to high school? And, and then I also added, after our curriculum review, we identified exactly what proficiency level every single class, language class is, all the way K to 12. And we published it with the language proficiency and the grade level, and what it leads to into the next school, et cetera. And then you can see at the bottom, if you keep scrolling down, there's a French, and then there's Spanish, sort of your choices once you get to electos in the high school.
I have a few questions about the SEAL by Literacy.
Sure.
And is it correct that you can achieve that both by the, by literacy exam or by getting a four or five on the AP French or AP Spanish?
No, you have to take one of the state mandated tests. There's a couple of them. Apple, we used stamp this year, we used, or no, we used to use stamp, and now we're using Apple. Some home languages that are kind of obscure, you know, not tons and tons of students taking it, they have a couple other tests. But you have to take one of those and your MCAS.
Okay. And the kids have an opportunity to do a retake? Is that correct?
Yes. So we have, after curriculum review, we decided that it was a, it was essential that we start promoting it early, early, early. We can have students take it in 10th grade, but we, right now, for equity reasons, are paying for those tests. And we, so we limited it, I mean, 83 took the test, so we haven't limited it that much. But we limited it to juniors and seniors, just because, you know, just because of the numbers. It's a huge test. And it takes all day. So the, the juniors take it, and they can pass it in junior year, but then they have another year, if they didn't pass it, to take it again in senior year. But you can also take just one portion of the test. Say that you did fantastic, except for writing, which is usually either the, the speaking or the writing piece. You're allowed to take one part of the test over again within 30 days. And if you pass it, then you actually have earned the seal. And now they also have a SEAL by Literacy with distinction. So, and that's very difficult to get. It's like really high level.
Particularly in French, seem to have gone down significantly for this year and last year. Will there be a retake for this year? Are we within the 30-day period?
They, we're taking them already. As a matter of fact, the, the students who were in the French Exchange are taking their retake right now. Matter of fact, this week, I think.
Okay.
And I think that might explain what we were asking about the last.
It is, but it doesn't explain last year. So I'm just, did we look into why last year it dropped from like 16 to five, five students?
You know, I, I will have to get the data free. I don't have it right, right with me. I know that, I know that COVID, the COVID year, they didn't even have any tests, you know? And so then the next year, we had all the students in junior, senior year, and sophomore, like, everybody was taking the test because they hadn't taken it the year before. And then we had a change in who, who was administering it. So Mr. Trotten was administering it, and then it turned to Ms. Portocarara. So, you know, there's maybe, I, I don't know if, what the, what the data is between the two. I haven't collected both sides. I've only talked to Corinne Portocarara about it. So I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So thank you very much. We covered a lot. There's been a lot of amazing work this team has done, and I'm so impressed with all of you. And you could see the really strong data and results that we've gotten this year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. And everybody, I'm sorry, except Ilsa and Jenny, they go. I'm sorry.
Now I need to escape, and I need to go to stop share. Hold on, they didn't have the option. Okay, well, okay, sorry. Yeah, I have it up already. It's here, but I just need to go to a different. Yeah. Okay. Is it, is it this? Oh, which one are you doing? No, you're doing this one, right?
Yep.
Okay, yes. Yes. And I need to do full screen layout. Okay, I'm just gonna do the, can I do, can I go the other way?
You can increase it just a little bit.
Okay.
Jess, this is, as of right now, it's a PDF.
Yeah.
Which does, which scrolls.
Do you want me to just give you?
Do you want a presentation, or do you want me to just scroll through it?
No, yeah, no.
PDF.
Sorry, everyone.
That's okay.
Is there stop share?
Yeah, yeah. Can you share both of them if you want? Yeah. Okay, so I need to get my email me. Let me get a see my email. Okay, why is this not? Okay, it's just taking a while to get to me. Okay, here we go. All right. So now I need to do share.
Go up for a second.
Okay. Oops. And I don't have it yet. Okay, there we go. Okay, now I'm going back to this. Now I need to go to this, right? Yeah, because I need to share the screen.
Yeah, but let's move the, let's go ahead and move this that way. Miss PD.
You are set. Yay.
Can you click on this?
Yes.
Perfect. So thank you, everybody. And thank you to the curriculum specialists. That data was amazing. And it actually really is reflective in the next two presentations you're going to hear. So I just want to kickstart us, and then the team is going to take it over. But you heard me talk about in the fall that we applied to DESI's Dyslexia Institute. Thankfully, we were accepted. It was us and about 15 other districts. And we were tasked with doing a lot of learning. And I just want to thank this crew sitting right here because they did a lot of extra work outside of school hours to help improve literacy in the district. And the amount of homework and input that went into developing an action plan for the district is really commendable to them. So I just wanted to thank them for that. We went to Wakefield several times from November to March, and then worked collaboratively as a team, both from, from homes and in the building to get this done. So there are going to be things that we somewhat fly through.
So there are gonna be things that we somewhat fly through that you will probably have in your packet that you're wondering why we're not going over and because much of it already has. And so we're trying to be mindful of your time as well. So with that, Dr. Slaney.
Hi, everyone. How are you? Thanks for having us here. This is something that we all feel very passionate about. We have a text trend called Dyslexia Geeks and another one, I know, there's a whole bunch. If you want in on it, we share all sorts of data. It's very riveting at midnight when we share things.
She's not joking.
No, I'm not joking. I just want to introduce our team. You've met Jenny Mann. She's our humanities curriculum specialist at Placentino. Ilsa O'Brien at Miller. Nicole Marshant, she's our amazing school psychologist at Placentino. And then Lisa Robinson, she is the Placentino Student Service Administrator. Just to frame our work, we spent a lot of time with, in the institute, learning about dyslexia. The state of Massachusetts, the Department of Ed came and they were partnering with Crafting Minds, which is the organization that helped put this on. We learned a lot and then this is our kind of culminating project that we came out of it. They wanted us to, we had to go through and examine all of our practices and determine which high-level practices do we want to focus on in the next year. By no means, this is all we need to focus on, but you have to take small bites to get to where you want to go. So you're gonna hear a little bit about some of our action steps and goals. Out of it, we created a vision statement and I'm not gonna read it to you, but just the big picture is that we believe that effective literacy instruction must be explicit, systematic, and data-driven. And that students need equitable access to high-level texts and meaningful learning. And that strong literacy instruction helps all students become confident communicators, critical thinkers, and equipped to succeed academically and continue meaningfully to contribute to the world around them.
All right. So like Dr. Slaney said, this is an overview of sort of two of the focus areas that we presented on in the final day of the institute. And so one of those focus areas was on progress monitoring. There was a wealth of information that we learned from the institute about what progress monitoring could look like, adjustments that could be made, you know, the purpose for it. We were already, fortunately, we were already in a pretty good place in what we were doing. And so we've, you know, been able to make some really exciting but small tweaks in what we're already doing. So for example, we were already progress monitoring at a monthly level, on a monthly level. And then depending on the student's level of need, we've shifted that to be either biweekly or weekly in some cases. And like you heard Elsa say in our other presentation, a lot of, some of these specific DIBELS measures, and DIBELS is primarily what we're using to progress monitor, our research shown to be sensitive enough so that, you know, even within a week or two weeks' time, you can really see growth or lack thereof and therefore speaking to, speaking to a need for, you know, adjusting that intensity or frequency of intervention or programming, again, like Elsa said. So we felt as though, you know, this was a really nice place to target because it was some, you know, an area we already had some good traction and momentum in. And if you could go to the next slide, this is just a snapshot on the left of a spreadsheet that we're using at Placentino. And so I'm so proud that this progress monitoring has really become a building-wide effort. So we have, you know, taken the time to separate students sort of into grouping. So thinking about, you know, students with perhaps the most significant needs, students on academic IEPs, you know, those students are being progress monitored by their special educators, biweekly or weekly. And then thinking about reading intervention students, receiving that, you know, pull-out reading intervention, getting that progress monitoring by myself or the tutors who I work with, either biweekly or monthly. Some of those things were already in place, but I think a really exciting piece is that we, we've always had a watch list of students, so students who weren't necessarily getting intervention at that time, but typically, you know, a student who a teacher would bring up as, you know, having some concerns about, wanting to keep a close eye on. And oftentimes, what we'll notice is that because of the progress monitoring, that those are students that we end up bringing into intervention groups. And so classroom teachers are now completing this progress monitoring with us. And it's been, you know, it was definitely a heavy lift, but it's been so exciting to see their understanding of the data now that they're doing this assessment with us and being able to sort of look at those trends over time. And, you know, looking at having two data points a month for most kids, it's just, it's been incredible. So really want to give, you know, kudos to our staff for that.
So for that priority element, we have two goals. The first one is to increase the frequency of progress monitoring for those most, students who are most at risk, to every two weeks. And then I won't read all of this, but just to highlight that we're going to look at setting specific growth goals for students depending on their needs and their instructional programs. And then we are also, in both buildings, we've shared some of our learning from the institute with our sped teachers and our sped teams and we're talking about how progress monitoring can support all of our work. The next goal is to establish data team meetings for progress monitoring. So we have been using data meetings for our benchmark data, but we want to be able to have data meetings for our progress monitoring as well so that we can fine-tune some of the interventions that we're providing. I already talked about those aim lines and that growth in our previous presentation, so I won't detail that yet. But those are our two goals for progress monitoring. And then these are just some of the challenges that we are thinking about and trying to anticipate what we need to be thinking about as we implement these new goals. And, you know, it's just basically time and adjusting to new practices.
The other priority element that we chose to focus on was curriculum and instruction, obviously an area that impacts all students. You heard us speak a little bit about our curriculum review and so this felt like a sort of natural tie to that. So definitely have, you know, noticed some inconsistencies within tier-one instruction. That's a conversation we're having district-wide as we're planning for PD, something that continues to come up. Thinking about differences within small group instruction, you know, which components of an ELA, what an effective ELA block includes and what's missing. And then, of course, you know, scheduling constraints, another piece that we're considering. And so, again, you've heard me speak about this already, but we're in, you know, we're in the middle of this curriculum review and like Elsa spoke about, we're participating in DESI's Implement Program. And so this is something that we're really committed to. And it was very validating on our last day of the institute when we presented this to some of the other districts because this was a common theme that we heard across many other presentations as well. So that just, you know, makes us think about the opportunities for collaboration and that work moving forward.
So then our second goal is to improve teacher capacity to provide some data-driven, small-group instruction that's targeted and differentiated. And, you know, this is all connected to our data protocols and our data meetings and the work that we want to do next year. And then some of our anticipated challenges for this goal, I think the key thing here is the cyclical opportunities, that we don't want our professional development or our work to just be a one-and-done opportunity, but that we're continuing to cycle through and reflect back on what's working, what's not working, and fine-tuning things. And then the scheduling and structures that need to happen for those things.
Some of our major takeaways from the institute was that we really learned a lot about dyslexia and like really kind of debunking the myths of dyslexia and what people might think dyslexia is. And that how it's really important to use screening and these tools to really identify it early just so that we can really catch the students when they're, you know, the most able to like take in all information and learn new strategies. So it really just helped, I think, our understanding and being able to bring that to our staff who might not fully understand maybe what dyslexia is.
Another one was really looking at all the essential elements of structured literacy. This is something that our teachers, it's not new to our teachers, but we just want to make sure that we are, making sure all these elements are in place just so across the board, all the students are getting this structured, these structured literacy routines and then integrating all our knowledge that we learned through this institute into our staff just so that it's more widespread. Other things, we do want to continue professional development and sharing the knowledge that we got from this institute with others and really increasing the collaboration among like our special education teachers, classroom teachers, and intervention specialists just so they don't feel like they're not working in silos, that we're all just kind of working together and sharing our knowledge.
And then this is our five-year vision. So to establish a thriving community of educator learners who are knowledgeable and well-versed in database decision-making and implementing scientifically researched practices for all learners across tiers one, two, and three. And just also to add, kind of like a, from a special education standpoint, I feel like as a school psychologist, I learned so much through this institute, especially since in grad school, we don't talk as much about identifying a specific learning disability or dyslexia in younger students. So really taking this course and like helping me as I evaluate students and really taking a closer look to identify early, I think it was just invaluable, so I, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that we actually learned there was they did a research of what college preparatory programs and we're so far ahead of them. So, you know, it's also going to be about when we have new hires and when we bring people in, you would think they're just graduating, this is what they should be learning. They're not. So how do we help our student teachers who come into our schools? Placentino has a great relationship with Framingham University. And how do we help them so that we're building their capacity in that piece? And when we're hiring people, how do we think about our professional development that we've been doing over years that we can make sure that new teachers have that information so that we're continually building it?
And just to add, I think that it's, all of the learning that's happened has contributed to more comprehensive special education evaluations. We have a great resource. It's a graphic organizer that looks at the different aspects of foundational reading skills that you need to have in place to be a reader. And we're able to take the information we have from either special education evaluations or from students receiving intervention and look at what we have. And we're able now to also go back in time and look at, historically, we've done this, but here's what we were missing. So we found that we were missing information about students' fluency and rapid naming. And that could be relating to retrieval and labored reading. So we're really digging much deeper into the students' profiles, which is assisting us in providing them with what they need. Sometimes that's special education and sometimes that it's accommodations and additional instruction with intervention. So it has been amazing.
Any questions?
This work and the work that you spoke about previously is really impressive and I appreciate the level of detail that you provided in demonstrating the systems that you've built to monitor student progress and then respond to that data accordingly. One question I've had is for both of the presentations, you're thinking about what's the next step with the data? So how are you using this, how are you communicating the assessment results to families?
Yeah, so this is our second year now of sending home three times a year benchmark assessment information. So at Placentino and Miller, that looks like DIBELS and IREDDI. And that's, you know, speaking about DIBELS, in particular, DIBELS is something we've been doing for years and years, but we haven't necessarily been sharing those exact results with families. And so as a result of the new dyslexia legislation that came out in July 2023, we are, we are sending those results home. And then the progress monitoring piece has been really exciting because like you saw, some of those snippets of the aim line, like Elsa was describing with the different data points, those go home as well so that families can see not only on those, you know, beginning, middle, and end assessments how they're doing, but, you know, more importantly, I would argue, you know, the progress in between, right? Because we know that it's not going to be a perfect, you know, upward, certainly not downward, but perfectly straight-up trajectory. It's gonna be, it's gonna ebb and flow because they're students and they're, they are real learners. So I think having that, you know, data at our fingertips through Amplify and the data dashboard has been hugely helpful in conversations with families, whether it's in a more formal setting, like, you know, an IP meeting or a SAT team meeting or just a conference with families. And I think teachers have really grown in their comfortability and capacity to speak about those results and those reports. And so that, we've done a lot of work on that as well.
For students that are flagged with your dyslexia screen or the DIBELS, is there additional conversation, is there additional, something that supplements the DIBELS parent report that goes home to those students that are flagged for a reading difficulty?
Yes, so depending on the student and the grade level and the time of year, there are many additional assessments we might do depending on, you know, what we're noticing their specific area of need is. So, you know, if it's a pretty big awareness concern, we might do a Hegarty assessment. If we're noticing a rapid naming concern, we might do the RAN-RAS. We have, we're fortunate to have a variety of assessments at our fingertips that we can use to sort of drill a little bit deeper. And we've sort of been working on over the past few years, building almost like a flow chart of, you know, if a student sort of flags here, like here are some different options. And we love assessment, so we will keep working on that.
We love data.
We love data. We don't love, that's true. Nobody loves assessments, but we love what, we love what they tell us.
I could point it to you all too. I'm really impressed by this, especially I like the data-driven approach to support what you're working on and also the goal of really identifying things early. I think I just see that benefiting kids all the way through their academic career, so. Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, as we continue on with this, it would be in a few years, great to look back and sort of see how, as we change things, how the outcomes change. Because obviously, data is great, but it takes, you know, 18, well, not quite 18 years, but 13 years for it to fully sort of play out.
And we hope to send more people to the institute next year. You can send, you know, secondary teams each year. And like we said, we have, these are two goals. And these were the ones that we felt like tied to current things that we were already doing. So they were more of a viable lift. You never want to just do something that's really kind of hanging out without any connections to anything because the work gets dropped, but there's other pieces that we can really dig into, so we're gonna continue the work.
And I think that's where the standard dashboard help, helping us with that longitudinal data as well is gonna be great. This is a real transition year for us when we put, you know, we started with the different curriculum models in the last few years and then took feedback and then tried to get the equity each building with the humanities and the STEM and all the work that all of you are doing, it seems to really be coming to fruition. It's great to see that it's moving in the right direction, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Jess, unfortunately, we're.
I just got this in five minutes or less.
And happy Principal Day. It's Principal Appreciation Day. Happy Principal Day to Dr. Slaney.
Yes. Okay.
When does school come to Appreciation Day?
Every day.
Sure. All right.
Are we ready?
Wow, okay.
Do we need a break or are we good?
We can use a break, but we'll keep going.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. So just kind of, you don't need to see all the fancy slides. So reported out to you beginning of the year, mid-year, and now for our end-of-the-year data. So I always kind of utilize this side and move it as we move through the year to just show where our numbers are at with things. And then I can kind of explain in the next slide, but just wanted you to see this picture of total number of students here in Holliston. Then those that are on IEPs, just a reminder that those IEP students also include in our numbers those that are out of district and those that are privately placed by parents that we still are required to service their IEPs. So that encompasses that number, just so you're aware. Our 504 numbers are creeping up, but I will give you an explanation on that. And our out-of-district numbers are, you know, I feel stable but going on the downward trajectory.
But Jess, the 41 was, sorry, the 43 was 41, okay.
Mid-year.
Mid-year, yeah.
Yes. Mid-year.
Mid-year, yeah.
Yes.
But obviously, a lot happens towards the end of the year.
Correct, where there is some movement with students, yes.
No, no, it's good. I'm just saying.
Yes, yes, yes. So just some of the takeaways there, right? It's always important for us to sort of stay within that 20% or below of students in special ed and where you are doing that where we can. special ed and where you are doing that where we can. Our 504 numbers are increasing and simply due to a shift somewhat in regulation, just so you all are aware, students that are on more of a permanent healthcare plan, we have been advised by our legal counsel, they actually should be on 504 plans. And so we're making those shifts as we, throughout each building, which is why you're seeing those increase.
Does that include all the buildings? Does that include all the buildings or?
Yes, yep, that's our total number of, yes. And then looking at that data, what are some next steps that I would want us to be looking at as a department, really looking harder, which everybody has spoken to tonight, about those tier-one level of supports for all students? This is an area where I feel strongly, as a district, we need to show more growth and provide more purposeful PD and just training for teachers, so they know how to support all learners in a meaningful way. Working with Deanne McLeod, we do this a lot with his tech integration team, is really looking at how do we provide better access through technology? There are so many applications and devices that we could be using to help students eas, more easily access the curriculum. And then maintaining the structure and staffing for our continuums. I feel like we have seen solid growth in those continuums, which is allowing us to maintain students that would otherwise in previous years most likely end up out of district. The next part that I just want to go through is just updating you on initiatives that we have been working on throughout the school year, and I'm not going to continue to go into the literacy and dyslexia. I think you get the point of all of the wonderful growth we're making in this area. I couldn't be more proud of all of our staff who have really taken hold of the literacy and language initiatives that we're pushing forward and really, you've heard me talk a bit about bringing in landmark and giving that PD in January and March to all educators in the entire district. How do we help struggling readers in our classroom, whether they are on an IEP or just a struggling reader? Our general educators have not been trained in reading, much like many of our special educators. Some of our, you know, younger ones have because that is, you know, being brought into more of the college courses, but as Dr. Slaney had said, we're kind of ahead of the curve. So looking at that. So here is, you know, just a summary of their action plan, I'm not going to go through that with you because I think you've got the gist. But our continuum progress, I just wanted to give a shout out to our continuum staff. They have done an amazing job sticking with me all year. We meet every six weeks as a continuum, so we will pull our bridge and what was called our Basis Network staff together, then we will pull our Pathway staff together, and our transition team of teachers also bounces in and out of the Basis Network trainings as well. And we use that time to really talk about how are things working within each continuum? How are we aligning that through the district? What other services do these students require to really help maintain them here in district? And what support do our staff need to do that? We are rebranding and we brought in student voice to this, so as you know, at the start of this year, we combined our Basis Network continuum, and it's kind of a hard name to just keep calling it Basis Network, it didn't feel great to us. So we gave some suggestions and we allowed the students to vote at the middle and the high school. And we landed on SOAR, which is Supporting Opportunities for Real-World Success. And that really does, it lends itself to that continuum of students, where those continuum of students are really working on functional academic skills to help them as they move through our world, but also really supporting them in real-world applications. So as they grow older, students in the SOAR program are really working on those vocational skills, the employment opportunities, the travel training, all of those things. So it's really a nice step. We also rebranded our transition program, which is our 18 to 22 program. And the last time I was in front of you, I talked about how we were growing that program. I'm super proud of Anne King and her staff in that program. We rebranded that to LIFT, which is Learning Independence for Tomorrow. And she has done a fantastic job, really taking hold, you'll see pictures at the end where we have created a small internal business with those kiddos who are creating really great decorative-themed, monthly-themed decorations that they are selling to staff, and we're hoping to kind of build that out further to the larger community when we have more time and more staff possibly. But we're also having, which is great, partnerships of people wanting to see what our 18 to 22 program is, and other districts that are saying, hey, can we partner with you in either tuition students in there, or what can we do to sort of bring us together? And we've had multiple opportunities of other districts that have come out here to observe both programs, our SOAR program at the high school, and then our transition program here in district, which is great. And then just working on criteria and transparency, we have done much more of broadcasting to families, the true descriptions of these continuums, what does it mean, who do we service, sharing our entrance and exit criteria, making sure we're looking at that as often as possible for students to make sure they're placed appropriately. And then the last big piece of initiative that has been a strong focus for me, and I've worked closely with Dr. Menard on this, is our professional development and trainings. And just wanted to highlight some big areas that I've seen a really nice improvement in an empowerment of our staff who were helping me as well seeking this out. Our nurses have done an amazing job of really tailoring PD for them that is meaningful and helping promote their own professional practice. They've done a lot with Boston Children's, Community Education, and done a lot around trauma and first aid care. We just worked with the Holliston Fire Department to help do all of our research for all of our nurses, which was needed, and then they've been part of the Trauma Symposium courses, which has been great. The middle tier really is areas in which I have worked to bring about to all staff in the district. So obviously, looking at our Language and Literacy Tier-One supports, our new IEP rollout has been awesome, but challenging but awesome. And then Jerielle and I really working to bring people in to help staff, better help support students who are really struggling with school refusal, anxiety, and mental health, which we know is a big concern. And then we can't forget our PERS, who I feel like this was probably our most successful year with two full-day PDs for them, and really getting their input on what is it that you need in the classroom? They are our frontline staff, and so they were able to share with us at the end of last year, this is what would be really meaningful for us, can we do these things? And so we work to either bring in people to help promote and, and provide that, or utilize staffing that have knowledge in those areas to provide them really meaningful PD. I don't know why I'm pointing it at that, it's over here. Just a couple updates on policies and procedures that I feel like is important for you to know, we're staying on top of. So there's been a shift in the Title IX regulations, so we have gone back with the new presidential administration, we're back to the 2020 regulations. So we just did an entire all-admin training, it's my, training with our administration team, all SSAs, APs, and principals, as well as central office staff. Our attorney Katie Minault came in and spent a good hour and a half with us just refreshing our memories on what was the 2020 and how do we revert back to that. I also had Attorney Minault come in and provide a training in January for all counselors, who are the leads on our 504 plans, which is why I talked a little bit earlier on some of those changes. And then the new IEP, just some assurances that we are 100% rolled out with that new IEP. At the end of this year, I'll be looking with our SSAs at just pulling a couple different IEPs to make sure we're really doing it in a similar fashion. So are we bulleting? Are we writing in paragraphs? Just so that parents can see some consistency and feel good about that journey. And then lastly, just, you know, I'm always proactive versus reactive, that's the way I like to lead. And so here is just a slide of areas where I feel like going into next year, this is where I would like to see the Student Services Department go. This is feedback from our staff that, you know, we've worked a lot with, really looking at our tier-one interventions, paying close attention to our D cap, our District Accommodation Plan. I feel strongly, and Dr. Menard and I have talked about, putting a team together to make sure that that document is updated, it makes sense, it's accessible to staff, and staff know why they're using it. That should be used for all learners. Looking at professional development and how do we do some tier-one planning for them, looking at continuing to better increase our co-teaching, and really looking at what true differentiation means and what that looks like in their classrooms. So I do feel like we throw that word out a lot, let's differentiate, we need to differentiate, but I, I do feel strongly, we need some training around what that looks like and how do we help educators, all educators differentiate, no matter what they're teaching. IEP alignment will be done within the Special Education Department, connecting with our SSAs, who will help me lead more of goal alignment, so really looking at student profiles and writing similar goals or a similar style in writing those goals, making sure they're measurable, and a way in which we can collect data to show progress or lack thereof. And also really aligning how we document our service delivery. So I have noticed over time, we, we kind of, we're not aligned in that as much as I would like, and so really making sure that we're doing that to stay aligned as a district. We are going to extend our contract through a grant that we have, so that Landmark will continue to consult with us and maintain that growth in the language-based program. So I've shared with you over time, we have really solidified our language-based program in grades four, five, six, we're growing it in the upcoming years, seventh, eighth, and want to see that continue as much as needed in the high school. And then last, just looking at really, how can we create more inclusion programming here? So you have seen that we have expanded our Unified Activities, so we do a really solid job of Unified Sports and Activities up here. We had a wonderful high school student that had created and piloted the Unified Theater here, which is amazing, and their name is slipping me right now, I feel terrible. Levi, yes, Levi, 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 shout out to Levi. So we're working, Levi is going to actually work with a middle school staff to bring that Unified Theater down there, which is awesome. And Allison Ditto and Marie Reggio at the middle school launched our first Unified Basketball Team there this year, which was a huge success. We ended with the Unified versus Holliston Police and Fire two weeks ago, which was an awesome event. And then the Community Bridge, we will continue to broaden that. So bringing community organizations and businesses into our school community to help include kids that need VoIP and employment opportunities is huge. And then last is the Classroom Creations, which is right up there in the corner. So those are all their products that they have created themselves with the help of our Carpentry Class here, who those students cut the wood for us and kind of sand it down, bring it to the LIFT program, to which they paint and they create the product, package it up, deliver it to all the buildings, it's really a wonderful thing. And just a shout out to all of our, you know, kids, this is, this is why we do what we do. And I couldn't be more proud of the Student Services Department and, and the district itself and the work you heard tonight of all that we're doing. So with that, that was pretty, pretty fast, right? Any questions for me? Thanks. That was great, yes, thank you for coming, it was great, it was great, it was fun, and I'm super, I mean, that was all staff, you know, brought forward by staff, and it's just, that's, that's where I love to see, you know, initiating and bringing forward ideas that staff really want and know is best for kids, is awesome, so. Yeah. It's a really meaningful program that attracts people to stay here. To stay, yeah, great, great.
I love all the work that the high school students do.
Oh, they're so great, I, I keep buying every product. They sold like two last month, two different ones, and I'm like, I have to buy them all, I just, I love them, so they're awesome, so. All right, thank you everyone.
All right, so we'll actually pull the Program of Studies update now that Mr. List is here, so we can.
And McLeod is also on the screen to do something on Power School after that, so whichever order.
Yep, that's, that's fine. I think you're going to give us an update, but you're not looking for any action from us tonight, correct?
Correct, I just wanted to. Well, first off, I just came from Clue, which is going on right now, and I think there's only tickets left for the Saturday matinee, and the kids were awesome, so that's, if you want to go, Saturday matinee is the only option. They're also doing a fundraiser for the program, they're going to play like a live action, they painted the stage to be like a Clue board, so you can do like a live action Clue game here, four to six on Saturday, so it was, anyway, it's awesome. So with the community receiving the letter about the change in schedule, I wanted to update all of you on some of the, sort of the timeline and action that's going to be going on, because it will involve some changes to things like the Program of Studies with the changes in, in possibly the course progressions. We'll be bringing up things like AP exams and taking those and how that fits in, because obviously the change from, you know, right now, a student takes like an AP Lang class and that finishes in January, but the test isn't until May, so it's really hard to say to a kid, well, now you got to go take this test. But once we have things like a year-long class, we're able to say it sort of fits in with the flow of the class itself, looking at the graduation requirements, the credits, the course sequencing and all of that. So the next step for us is at our staff meeting on Monday, I'm going to be asking for representatives from each department to form a committee to really go over, we have a list of about 25 different items that we have to look at as, as, as a school community to determine what our steps are moving forward. Midterms, grade weighting, how, you know, quarter, semester, how we're doing all of that. So those are all important questions that we need to bring forward to school committee, and I wanted just to update all of you on sort of what that process would look like. So we're going to be starting that now. And then as we go through all of that into the start of next year, we'll start bringing those forward to school committee, because those will obviously need to be approved. We've been having some really amazing conversations with departments, making sure that students have the ability to take the classes they want to take, that this schedule change doesn't interrupt the flow of getting to where they want to get to. Just as an example, the, the math department is looking to shift next year, so normally a student comes in and they take, if a student who's on an advanced track would go take Algebra One Part Two and then take Geometry, next year they would take Algebra One Part Two and then Algebra Two instead of Geometry there, and then the 10th grader would take Geometry. So we're not changing the curriculum, just the order there, but that will allow for that progression, for students to be able to take the AP Calculus and AP Stats when they want to. And so the, each of the departments have been amazing in sort of looking at how we can ensure that our current students and our incoming ninth graders aren't impacted negatively by the schedule change. That's kind of, it's sort of like a quick overview of what we're doing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about any specifics, about anything sort of in that starting process anybody had.
So one question I've had, just as we go through, this is what we do with, you know, APs and any sort of requirements to take an AP or some number, have you had a chance to think about that? Do you have sort of a recommendation or thought that you are looking to do for next year with that?
Yeah, so I mean, so next year, we, you know, as we've done this year, really pushing students to, you know, they take an AP class, and part of taking that AP class is it comes with the AP exam. And as I said, one of the issues that we face in our schedule is long gaps of time between taking those exams, we've really encouraged students to take it. And what we'd like to do is really continue to push that moving forward, and then for that 26, 27 school year, when we make that official shift and the students are in class up until and through the exam, really then say that students need to take their exam. But that would hopefully fall in, you know, my recommendation would be that, but again, I'd really like to have those conversations with the staff and, and talk about how we ensure that all students can access that, make sure that we have the scholarship money necessary to ensure that students aren't limited in what they can take. You know, there is a, a fee waiver, but then, so it's a smaller amount, but we want to make sure that all students can take the exams if they would, you know, across the board.
So basically, we want to continue looking at it, researching it?
Yeah, we're going to keep looking at it, and then we hopefully for 26, 27 school year can implement some plan. That's awesome.
For some students starting AP class in the fall, if it's three semesters with a change in 26, 27, how would that work? Meaning like I take three sema-
Yeah, it's three semesters down to a year long.
But next year will still be block scheduling?
Next year will be the same as we have now, so that some will be two semester, some will be, sorry, two terms, and some will be three terms.
So the three terms one, then when we start the 26, 27 school year, how does that work? Because they still have to take a term, the last term, from the previous schedule. So does that just carry through, or do we have to rethink that?
It's four, it's four quarters of the class.
Okay.
So just, so most school, like most schools, because most don't run the block scheduling we have, most schools what they do is they, you start, you have, you have some summer work for APs. That happens, the reason that happens across the board in Massachusetts is because we start three, three weeks to six weeks later than schools in like the southeast, for example. So our kids already come in at a disadvantage. So kids normally are doing summer work for APs. Then they go through the curriculum, they take the exam anywhere from May 5th, 6th to May 15, 16, 17, whenever it falls. And then after that, they do continue on with some parts of the curriculum. The teachers all go to what's called AP Camp. It is like Camp for Adults, a lot of adults who like that content area. And you go to AP Camp, and you learn a lot about what they ask in the test, what content areas to focus on throughout. And so that's really helpful. We have a couple of teachers who are going this year to become, to be graders on AP exams, because that then again helps our students in the long run, because it helps those teachers get trained for what AP is looking for on those exams. And so through that process, they sort of know where to focus within the curriculum to make sure that by the time the exam comes, that they're ready for the exam and that the, for seniors, what turns out to be a couple of weeks, and for underclassmen, it turns out to be about a month of that time, they continue on with curriculum in that content area beyond. And we kind of do that now, actually. We have these classes called like Chem Apps, which is basically the kids who take AP Chem can continue on into the Chem Apps for that fourth term and continue, continue the work. So we do have classes that already kind of exist like that.
But I think if we talked about this a little bit before, that the three-term classes are actually like a year and a half of content. So they'll go to the full year, which would be less content, but some of them will have a lab as well, because.
Some, the science generally have like an extra class period where they have labs to get those accomplished.
Did you want?
Well, I said about the math piece, yeah, I mean, so the math piece, oh yeah, you can put it up there, this is just, as I was saying before, something to make sure that the students have what they need so that they don't, aren't, so they can access the classes they want. So the, the math, as I said, we usually have the geometry, it's Algebra One Part Two and then Geometry, but now it's going to be Algebra Two and then, sorry, if you look at, so there's the ninth grade in 24, 25, they're on that regular track that they would have been, that's the same. And the second, if you go down, Susan, to there, students can take the Algebra One and then Algebra Two honors, they can take Geometry honors. Students, a lot of times students will choose to double up. if you look where it says available courses and titles, of course, is may change, the math teachers are going, are researching various math programs that will allow them to sort, to do, to possibly do some integrated type classes, which will allow for some more acceleration for some students as well. So sometimes you can integrate the model, and so you're doing classes, so like, for example, during the Algebra Two, you get some of what is in Precalc. And so during that Geometry honors, they're looking at integrated models that would infuse some of the Precalc in there, so that a student could possibly go into the AP Calculus class right away. But again, those are parts of the research we have to do to make that determination. But by changing the structure and having Algebra Two next, it will allow students to take, as it says there, the AP Calc in 11th grade, which is what is currently offered to students. But they don't have to rush through, and they still can get to AP Calc, which is why we made that change. No, it's a little bit confusing, I apologize, but it, this basically allows it so that every student can get to AP Calculus if they'd like to. Every student.
Is it just flipping what we do now?
Yes.
To take Algebra One and Geometry for those honors kids in ninth grade, and we do Algebra Two, but now we're just flipping Geometry and Algebra Two?
Yeah, so it's not changing the curriculum right now, it's just a flip right now, because obviously if we change the whole curriculum, we have to come here first. But, so they're going to be researching that 10th grade year, because there's a possibility of putting in an integrated model for that cohort, so to accelerate that process through so that they could get AP Calculus in 11th grade.
Is the thinking because of, of the change to the seven drop two in 26, that those kids would be taking, so those are now our 10th graders in 26, 27, is the thinking that they would simultaneously take honors Geometry with Precalc? Is that why you are trying to flip them?
So what, we have two options available to us. One is that they take them simultaneously. You can't take Algebra Two and Precalc at the same time, which is why the switch. So one of the options is you leave it like that and a kid takes two math classes, which is not unheard of, like that a lot of kids choose to double up in an area they're interested in. The other thing that the math department is looking at is looking at an integrated accelerated model for those students, which a lot of districts do, where those students who wish to accelerate can take a class that covers the standards of Geometry and that, and the Precalc standards. And where that would exist is in that, if, have to go back, if we take our seventh graders, if that's, if a seventh grader is taking Algebra One in eighth grade, they would come in and take Algebra Two in ninth grade. They could then take an, in that Algebra Two class, you get some of Precalc. In 10th grade, you take the integrated Geometry with the rest of Precalc to then take the, and this is, that's a select group of students, that's not, you know, that's not every student. But what the chart does show is it gives every student access to Calculus, because they could take the classes to get there. The, that bottom row right there, that's, that's like the accelerated, that's the accelerated But for next year, there's no change in curriculum, just a change in order.
Okay. And I understand for the honors track, but what about the CP kids, would they also have that same benefit, which would be Algebra, so incoming freshmen next year, CP Algebra Two, and then in the 26, 27, seven drop two schedule, they would be able to have CP Geometry as well as CP Precalc, right? They're going to have that same?
Same options, yeah. So this, the reason to do it that way is it sort of, it creates a level of equity for all students to be able to access Calculus if they would like to.
Got it. In a seven drop two, do you still see a scenario where kids could double up in math junior or senior year if they wanted to and do AP Calc and AP Stats?
They can. I mean, that, so in most districts, so if we, if we don't do an integrated model, you end up with what most districts have, which is a lot of kids will take AP Stats and AP Calculus who really want, you know, that math. A lot of them will take it at the same year. Will take, you know, a senior year, they're, that's their, they like math, they enjoy it, they want to take those. Many students, most schools, that's how it operates. The reason that we're looking at an integrated, possibly, we don't know, the integrated, is that it would just spread, spread those APs out more. But either way, students would have access to both AP, advanced AP math classes.
Thank you.
So it's really great to hear that, you know, obviously, this was a challenging time, but that, you know, now that the, we've reached an agreement, we have a schedule that, you know, it's exciting to hear about all the work and stuff that's being done towards, towards implementing it.
Yeah, no, it's been great. The meetings with, with departments has been awesome. There's some, you're going to be hearing about some really creative ideas out of, out of science, out of math, social studies, met with the LA today, so it's been, it's been really awesome meetings, and they're really looking at the best ways to support students and to make sure that they have access to all of the classes. And that, I, I think the other piece that's come up a lot, when you looked at like a chart like that, is talk about how our current schedule tracks kids, really tracks kids, but they're finding ways to ensure that students can access the classes that they want at whatever level that, that they would like to, so.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And everybody go see Clue, it was awesome.
Great. I think we're, your part is done, right?
You still have Deanne?
No, 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 yeah, but Mr. List's part is done, so thankfully we know that Dan was on, so why don't we, why don't we go to him and let him then proceed with his evening?
Deanne, can you unmute?
Yeah, I'm here, hi, everybody.
Okay, can you fix the screens so we can see? Oh, there it is, okay.
And Dan, Lisa allotted you five minutes, so.
Deanne, do you want to, do you want me to give you sharing rights so you can share, or do you want me to throw it up?
I can share, but you can hear me okay?
Yep.
I think you have, I think you have sharing rights already.
All right, I'm trying to be as quick as possible. All right, still having trouble sharing.
Okay, let me just plug it up then. Well, if this is the- What's that? You can hear message that if you click the lab, yeah.
Susan, if you want to throw it up, I could-
Yeah, I've got it.
Just talk through it.
There you are.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I just wanted to provide an update on the data breach. We've talked about it in the past couple meetings, so it's getting to the sort of decision time, so I wanted to give you some information to make the best decision that you think we should make for Holliston. So Susan, go ahead to the next slide. All right, so this, the brief agenda, just a few slides, I'm going to kind of give you a timeline of what our Privacy Alliance has done, talk about the litigation that they're proposing, and then next steps for you as the school committee, and then any questions you may have. Next slide. So as members of the Tech Cooperative, we are lucky to be part of the Privacy Alliance, so that's the organization that's been advocating on our behalf during the breach. So here's a quick timeline, January 8th is when Power School notified all districts of the breach, the breach happened on December 20th. January 15th, the SDPA, the Privacy Alliance, sent the first letter to Power School, telling them they broke our privacy agreement. They sent another one in February as well. March 5th, the Privacy Alliance reached out to school districts to let them know the situation, especially regarding litigation. And then finally, March 11th, we had a webinar with the lawyers who were facilitating the lawsuits. So, next slide. So here are the violations, kind of no surprise here. The big one was student PII was breached, and so as part of our agreement with Power School, they were responsible to protect that. They also had to protect staff data, so that was part of the breach as well. And then they had to take appropriate security measures, which they did not do in this case. And finally, they did not notify us in a timely manner. Our privacy agreements require 72-hour notification, so the event happened on December 20th, and they notified us on January 8th, so that was a breach of contract. Next slide. All right, so it's a little bit of confusion here, this is a mass action suit, so that's, would be better for this school district if we choose to move forward, because it's a lawsuit where all the districts have similar, basically, concerns about this breach, but each district files its own lawsuit, and that's where you would come in, and you would be asked to sign on with a law firm to represent Holliston Public Schools, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. So it's different from the class action, where it's one lawsuit, and then there's, you know, thousands of people that kind of divide the settlement. This is a mass action, where it's multiple lawsuits, all with the same issues, basically, and Holliston Public Schools would be one of those lawsuits. And it's better as far as damages, so that's the, that's the good news, should we get to that point.
Yes.
All right, here are the requests that the plaintiffs are going to make, which would be Holliston Public Schools, if we choose to move forward. So basically, financial compensation for undelivered services. So that would be, they were supposed to protect our student data, they were supposed to be a secure environment, and then any breach-related cost. So that, this is a little bit unclear, but basically all the staff time we've spent notifying families and former educators, all of that would be part of the compensation. There's not a number really we could put on that yet. They said it would take us about, if we choose to move forward, it would take one staff member from Holliston, probably me, about five to eight hours of work to prepare for this lawsuit. The other thing we could possibly do is a platform transition plan. That means if we decide to move away from Power School, which, not what we're recommending, but if the organization did want to do that, we could put that as a cost that Power School would pay for. And then any protection from future lawsuits. Should a family or student decide to sue Holliston, we would be exempt as part of this, or they would be, Power School would be responsible for that lawsuit. We don't think this is going to happen anyway, but it'd be part of the, part of this lawsuit. The final one is basically, we would not be charged for a court-appointed monitor to make sure Power School is adhering to security standards. So basically, we would not be on the hook for that, hiring that person. All right, next slide. All right, so this is the last part here. The law firm that we would sign on to would be called France Law, known as F3. So this is a hyperlink to the FAQ where much of this presentation was summarized, or some of, this presentation summarized much of the FAQ. But that's a more detailed description, hyperlink there. Sorry, that's my dog acting up. So there is an option, if you want, if you want to hear more information from the actual lawyers who are litigating this, they will present to the school committee. So that is an option, just let me know. We can have them on a call at a future meeting, and you can answer, you can ask, you know, any detailed questions about the lawsuit. I will say, there's no, it's been made crystal clear, there's no financial commitment for Holliston Public Schools. This is going to cost us nothing. F3 would make their money on the settlement, I think it's 30 or 40% of whatever Power School would pay Holliston Public Schools. And then finally, you would be asked to, and I'm recommending that you put on an agenda if you decide to move forward, voting to partner with F3, which is the legal team to represent Holliston. Where you could delegate, for example, or vote to delegate Dr. Cuskett to sign with that organization at the appropriate time. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, not at this time.
When, when do you think you would like us to, to vote, or first of all, does anyone want to have a presentation by the law firm?
I would require a lot of the information is in the presentation.
What do you think?
I don't think I need a, a presentation.
I apologize, I can't hear the questions clearly.
Sorry, no, we're talking amongst ourselves about whether we want a presentation or not.
Someone closer to the microphone, sorry.
Sorry, Dan.
I don't think they'll need a presentation, Deanne, can you hear me?
Okay, got it.
From, from the lawyer.
If you feel good, Donna. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't think I, I need to, I think, I think we should do a little bit of our own investigation, looking at France Law and Power School and some of these other, I mean, there's dozens of suits out there already on it.
Did France Law approach us? How, how did that?
It threw tech, correct, Deanne?
Oh.
I don't think he could hear, can you?
No, I heard that one, the consortium is working with France Law, so it's part of their, their legal team. So they're, again, that seems to be the group that we've been asked to partner with, I really don't know how, or if we have another option, we might.
So as part of our involvement with Tech-
Yep.
-and the collaborative, and I said on the board, we get these other things like the data privacy, and so that part of the data privacy agreement was to protect all of these things and multiple- And multiple players have signed on to that. So not all of the districts in tech have Power School, but the ones that do are gonna be part of this. And I think most districts are going to vote to go with F3, because that's what's tech and their lawyers are recommending.
Do you know any other districts that have authorized, not just F3, but to proceed the mass action?
Do you know from your tech meetings? I haven't, I'm due to have a follow-up meeting with tech myself. But do you know from your meetings who's actually already decided?
I do not. We reached out to Emily Parks, who is our facilitator at tech. And she said, she didn't give me like any details about the districts, but she said that the time is coming. And like Dr. Cuska said, this week tech is gonna be voting the same process, right?
I think next week I have a meeting with them. So by the 9th, I should have an answer from whether they went on, which I think they will. And then we would know for the 15th if you wanted to vote there.
Okay, so yeah, let's put it on for the 15th as a potential vote and get more information as far as what others are doing.
Do we know if there's a cutoff date though, like to proceed or not? Typically, there's like a...
Special limitations.
Yeah.
We have time.
I guess, yeah.
No, it's not a class action, so you don't have to sign up for a class action. There's no...
That's right, yeah.
But if we're not ready to vote on the 15th, we don't have to, but...
We can put it on, and we should have more information for that.
It works.
If you can find out if any of your tech directors have signed, their districts have signed on, you might know before I would.
Sure, I can do that. And to answer Frank's question, Emily Parks said the end of the school year felt like the deadline to sign on for the settlement.
Got it. So, yeah, May 15th.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
All right, moving swiftly along. We're now at the central office admin update. I'm not sure if you have any left, but...
Just three, four quick things. I did mention quickly earlier that it is Principal Appreciation Day, so I wanted to give a shout-out to our principals that we're so fortunate to have in the district. Today, I was principal for the day, which actually ran into Mr. Alfred at Rams. And, you know, people talk a lot about middle school, but the kids were amazing. We had a great day. Fortunately, we were able to be outside for lunch, which was nice. So I did lunch duty and all the things that you do as principal. Teachers were great, I felt very welcomed. I actually got to sit down with both Carla and Casey today and talk about data and all the things that I never get to do at the building level with them. So that was nice as well. And Miller Roundtable was yesterday, and I put some pictures, I think, up on Instagram already. The kids did a great lesson, and we talked about how they're going to... They made rocks about, to be inspirational, about bullying and kindness. And they're gonna put them out Saturday. Those rocks should be out when they're doing the cleanup day that Bob O'Brien was talking about with Ola. And then I know that I just wanted to remind you that Dan had shared with you the AP test data bar graph, because it was a question of that, and he explained what happened. And it got interpolated, and he updated the bar graph on that. And you should have a copy of that and will send to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to wish the principals Happy Principals' Day and the teachers Teacher Appreciation Week next week. Thanks to everybody for all the hard work they do for our students. Can I just say one more thing? Special Olympics is 5:00, 9:00 next Friday as well. It's always a great day, and we'll get you pictures for the 15th.
Thank you. Sorry, Dr. Jordan.
Again, just happy and excited for the principals, Principal Appreciation Day. You know, so thank you to them. That's it.
I just had a follow-up. I probably directed to Dr. Menard, but any of you, we've had a lot of discussion about the high school schedule change. And in doing that, we talked about the increased instructional minutes, the 15 extra minutes. What we haven't talked that much about is where the 15 extra minutes is going for Miller and for the middle school, and also Placentino. So I just, do we know at this point, like for the middle school, for example, is it divided evenly up between each of the blocks? Or what does that look like, the implementation on the additional 15 extra minutes?
I know that Karen had had some challenges with the, when you add the minutes, and how it affects the teacher contractual prep time and all of that. And there was a discussion about trying to, the teachers are really trying to use that Rams block, as they do use it very robustly. You talked, they heard, talked today about the interventions. So they were trying to add some minutes into the intervention block and into each of the blocks. So I don't have the exact numbers, I could have her share that with you.
If we could just get a presentation just to understand that, because I know with a lot of the, a lot of the discussion around the override, we talked about direct instruction. And I have some concerns if it's, if the instructional time is within Rams block, which is more of a, more of a study block. I know interventions are happening for some groups, right? 20 kids or 26 kids a couple of days a week, but...
On her speaking, she definitely, they really, the teachers were really wanting to have that more robust block so that it can be used as direct instruction. It already is, but to have, it's a short amount of time right now. So I would, like I said, I'd rather her speak to it. I do believe my conversations with Dr. Slaney that they're adding the 10 minutes to the math block. For Placentino. And then at Miller, I'm pretty confident, but I didn't confirm that again, that he was doing it during, for the science and social studies. Maybe not all 15, but that's where, part of my suggestion was that, because we knew that was a really short block and trying to fit in that time. So I do believe that's where it landed, but they're still working on their schedules a little bit. But I can get you an update for the next meeting.
The next meeting, thank you.
Yep.
What's next? There you go, subcommittee communications. Sarah, you prepared something?
Yeah, I just wrote a short thank you email that I thought we could have Dan sent out to teachers on, was it Sunday night or Monday morning? Just thanking teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. I know the PTO is doing their big...
It's in your folder.
Week-long celebration. But I wanted to have the school committee send out something as well. So if anyone has any comments or edits or to that note, it's...
No, it's a great idea.
It's short and sweet, but I hope it communicates the base message.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you think it should go Monday morning? Monday morning first? Monday, yeah.
8:00 AM?
Yeah, okay. I will ask Dan to send it out then.
Do you want to just approve it?
Approve it.
Yeah, so make a motion to approve communicating this out to our wonderful teachers. I mean, it's also, I think, celebrated for most staff. I know there's different days for different...
I think we'll just, it'll be to teachers.
To teachers, okay.
Yeah. Second by dawn? You made the motion, right?
Well, I asked for the motion.
You asked for the motion.
It's 12:30. I just made a motion to approve this communication to go out to teachers.
Move by dawn, second.
All right, all's favor. Anything else from communications?
No, that's it. We're still doing our recaps.
Well, that was great, though, so I do appreciate that. Cynthia's not here, so you see we don't have policy update. As far as...
We will have, we will have a couple of policies for the next...
For the next meeting?
Meeting, yeah.
Just gonna go out with Bang?
Yep.
Perfect. Superintendent Eval, do we have any?
I don't think we have any updates. We...
We set a deadline for tomorrow, right?
Yeah, tomorrow.
I think we should extend.
Can we get an extension?
When is your meeting to sort of pull it together?
I think it's next week.
There's, we have the, something scheduled for Wednesday, but I'm worried...
Let me double-check my...
I wanna say 4:30 on Wednesday.
You guys are rescheduling.
Just before town meeting. That would be town meeting.
So we will need to be here at 4:30.
But I think we need to reschedule it.
We might need to move it.
See, if you can do something at, on Tuesday, maybe.
Tuesday? Well, they'd have to post.
Fairly, they post tomorrow.
I will say Tuesday, it can have to be later for me, but I can do Tuesday.
Tuesday or Thursday, maybe, but...
Well, I think there's gonna be a couple of meetings probably. First, you gotta go through them, and then someone's gonna start drafting, and then, you know...
Well, with the idea that it's Tuesday or Thursday, would an extension until Sunday evening be reasonable for...
Well, I was saying, first thing Monday morning, so.
First thing Monday, okay.
Get it done Sunday evening, give you the whole evening.
Okay.
Is Superintendent Eval okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Because there's not much, if we move me Tuesday, we just need everyone's write-up by Monday. And like, I don't, we're not putting it together by the time. Like, we'll have it all put together, yes, but like, we're not writing it up before we meet, or are we?
Be sure, it's up to you guys to generally sort of reviewing them, and then someone sort of starts, takes the onus to draft.
Let's get it done Monday morning when we wake up. We should have all of the individual. And then we'll, Sarah, myself, and Cynthia will figure it out.
Okay.
And we'll figure out a time, we'll text Cynthia tonight.
Okay. Budget?
Budget, we had a meeting today, and we revoked our, voted again on our operational budget. FinCon had, the recommendation was the 3.26% for a FY '25, '26 budget of $44,372,069. And we don't anticipate needing an additional budget meeting before, before town meeting. So we have voted our budget.
Okay. So we'll just skip to that. So what we did, we voted the budget normally by town meeting unless there's a real issue, but it might, 13 years ago, there's never really been a real issue. Close, but very close. But usually, before going into town meeting, we do sort of vote to match the Finance Committee's recommendation. That being said, I'm comfortable not doing that tonight, even though we've sort of voted as a recommendation from the budget subcommittee, just in case manna falls from heaven and something happens over the next, you know, week to, you know, to keep our official... So we can get more money, yeah, yeah. That's manna falling. But then, the meeting before town meeting, we would vote to match that and reflect that in our presentation. So we could vote it tonight, but we don't, we don't have to. The only thing that we do need to do tonight as part of the capital project, so first of all, I want to thank the Finance Committee for supporting the budget. I think, you know, we came in at the promised sort of level service budget of three and a quarter, technically 3.26, so we appreciate the extra .01.
We were the largest increase in the...
We were certainly not the largest increase in town on a percentage basis. Obviously, we will always be the largest increase on a dollar basis, but there were many departments with larger increases than ours.
That is fair and true.
I'm not gonna name them, but you know who you are. But they also supported all of our capital requests, which I think was incredibly beneficial to us, and we really appreciate that. As part of that, we did agree to go back and sort of, what they go, sort of sweep some of our old capital requests that had outstanding balances. And so the subcommittee tonight voted to agree to that and to sweep five of them. And if you open up in your folder, there's a capital account sweep that Dr. Jordan put in there earlier this evening. And we're looking at the orange. And so what we'll do is, we could vote the number, but it was recommended to just simply vote to fully sweep these accounts. So that way, in case the numbers had changed any, you know, we're just basically allowing the, freeing up the account to do this. Town meeting could also do it, but it's easier if we do it. And so we will be returning about $44,000.
To the town.
To the capital account.
To the capital.
To the capital, which I think is, you know, a good partnership, a demonstration of partnership. So I will entertain a motion to approve the release of all funds within the school tech devices appropriation from 10/23, the kindergarten tech appropriation from 10/22, the high school lab improvement appropriation from 10/22, the school technology appropriation from 5/22, as well as the school curriculum appropriation from 10/19 for $43,967.56, or whatever is in there when they, when they go to sweep it.
So move.
Any questions? All those in favor? So swept. That's great, and we went through and budgeted all the other ones, and there's still active sort of work going on to meet the appropriations. So thank you, Dr. Jordan and Dr. Cuska, for getting that together. All right, so let's see. It's the last thing on our agenda tonight is the math leveling subcommittee. I think that the initial hope a couple of weeks ago was that we would sort of, we sort of created the shell, if you will. Now we need to sort of place the people in the shell. But I did see the emails just went out yesterday to the community, seeking community volunteers. Do we have an update as far as, like, has there been a communication out to staff, seeking staff participation?
It did go out to staff, too.
It did go out to staff, too? Did it go to all, like, sort of staff, all math teachers, all? Do we know?
Dan McLeod sent, Dan, are you still there? Maybe not. I think it went out to the district, but I'm not positive. I didn't see how it was sent.
So if we're seeking, they did hear from somebody who said they didn't get, you know, a teacher that...
I didn't confirm that they did go to middle school teachers.
That's great. No, but so were there two emails, like, one to...
I thought it was one.
To the community, and then one to staff? Is it separate, or was it...
I know the one that was received by staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you're a staff member, you didn't get a check, your spam box. Otherwise, if you're interested and you didn't get it, I would recommend reaching out to Hillary and Sarah and Karen and Ron, maybe just everyone, to express your interest and ask for the link or whatever was sort of sent out. But I really do want to, I would really like to vote on that on the 15th, because I do want that group to get going. Because I think Hillary, the timeline you laid out was to have a recommendation, and most of the work done by January, right?
Yes, I'm just looking for when we're meeting next.
Was it clear on that form when they were due?
I am not sure.
Okay.
I have to look. We are meeting on Monday, right? I believe, so I'm hoping that we can, let's put that on the agenda for the 15th. I think we have members heading.
All right. Does that work?
For the 15th?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure.
Okay. Really appreciate both of you guys' hard work on that, and then Karen and Ron's as well. And I think Jerry L., too. All right, did I get everything? I know we were sort of skipping around, I think I got everything. So 9:55, that does bring us to the end of our, of our regular session. Our next planned meeting is May 15th. I don't think we have a need for a public one in the interim, but, oh, well, no, so I'm sorry. We will be meeting before town meeting. Hopefully, that'll be fairly quick, but we'll post that shortly.
6 o'clock, or...
Six or later, yeah. I don't think we'll need a ton of time, I hope. So we do have need for executive sessions. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from open session into executive session, from which we will not return for the purposes of discussing strategy with threats to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares, and this is related to the HFT, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And this is related to our Student Services Director. Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan, I'm a yes. We stand adjourned, thank you very much, and good night.